Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, February 27th, called at order at 6:41 PM. First item of business is review of the remote work policy for three. Everyone will let me know if you're having trouble hearing me. I'm halfway losing my voice, so if I need to speak up, just please let me know.
Thank you for the changes, Brian.
Okay.
The new section or reformatted section 19 and the new section 20.
Does it address what you all were hoping to address?
Yeah.
Good.
At least it does for me.
It does for me as well. I just have one question on the liability insurance.
Section is that one?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Point one seven. What does, what does reasonable liability and property insurance mean?
That's a fair question. I think that could depend on each employee's situation and what they have for their home. So I think we have to be careful about being too prescriptive. But what it's trying to address is if you're using your home as a place of business and the town is permitting there, there can be a blurring of where work stops and where home begins. And so if there was to be a workers' compensation claim for some incident that happened while you're working from home, there may be some fact finding that needs to happen between what actually occurred in that situation and whether or not that's a work event versus whether that's a personal home event. And so I think it's just an acknowledgement from the employee for the policy that if you're interested in this option and we go down this road, that while the town has an obligation to maintain all of the coverage that we would for any employee, that there's also an acknowledgement that they need to maintain whatever's appropriate for their situation. So it is a little broad. You're right. It's a little vague, but I think if we were trying to be more prescriptive, we may inadvertently leave something out.
So my second question would be that homeowners generally have liability and property insurance on a number of different levels that would probably kick in. But if an employee is renting, more than likely they're not, they don't have an insurance policy.
Well, I think that would also imply that if they had to have renters insurance for whatever their situation is.
Okay.
Right.
I'm no insurance expert, but I would assume homeowners and renters would be liable to say that's a work claim and not a
Oh, I'm sure they would.
Their claim. So I don't know how much that helps because I have a feeling they would push that liability to our insurance in a heartbeat.
Right. At the end of the day, if a situation was to occur and it came down to that, it would be the insurance company's working out responsibility. This is not meant to become a contentious issue necessarily between employer and employee, but again, if something was very clearly a work-related incident, our policies absolutely cover. And we've had this conversation with our insurance company about this. So there's no, we're not trying to not have that be our responsibility. That's true. The issue is if somebody was not doing work-related business during their scheduled time and they're under the work-from-home policy and that was documented, determined that that was factual and the claim therefore it needs to be denied. It's not the town's responsibility. It's the individual's responsibility. This is just meant to be an acknowledgement that there's personal responsibility for those issues.
Are you comfortable, are you comfortable with it the way it's written for now?
Yeah, I think I am. I just don't know how, I view it as it stands right now as a, as a case-by-case
Agreed.
Policy.
Yeah.
And it will be worked out when it happens.
Fair. Hopefully it's something that never happens.
Right, right, absolutely.
Obviously. If there's no further edits then are we ready to adopt?
I am. I don't have any other concerns with it.
Okay, I don't either. Would anyone of you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the remote work policy, policy number ADM-195 effective February 27th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Review of the FY24 to FY27 heating oil procurements.
Section five.
Yep.
So this is your, we've been using the same procurement vendor for a number of years. We go out for a three-year procurement. We award in one-year increments, so you reserve the right to extend for the remaining two years. So in your packet was the recommendation on the award to Sprague, who has been our vendor for the last three years. There's no concerns from the town's point of view about them being a responsible vendor. They were the lowest bid. And it would be an award if you were comfortable proceeding for FY24 and then we'd bring it back to you for '25 and '26.
It's an option each year to continue at that.
Right.
We didn't have how that compared to the current year, did we?
You'd like to get the current year's rates?
I was just asking. I didn't see it in there.
No, would you like me to pull up right now?
It's fine.
Okay.
Any questions, concerns? You guys want to move forward or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any concerns. I mean, given the fact that there's only two and they're the lowest.
All right. I have no concern.
You want a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, does it recommend?
Yeah, I see you got the recommended language on here. Make a motion to award the procurement for number two heating fuel oil to Sprague Operating Resources LLC of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for FY 2024, beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024, and authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So you have two more field types coming. They'll just probably be on your March 13th agenda.
Okay. Review of FY 20, excuse me, review of the 2022 annual housing rehabilitation loan fund report. So this is for calendar '22?
Correct.
It started with just over $59,000 after loan repayments, interest and withdrawals and fees. End of year balance is 62,814, 22 cents. There was no new loans in, oops, in '22?
I think the last one was back in '21.
So I would assume the loan funds expended is a incremental on an existing loan?
I know that we had issued, I believe we issued one or two loans in '21 as we were preparing to apply for the next three town loan fund. So they may just have been dispersed in the beginning of '22 after they were approved. But I don't believe I brought any loans to the three of you to approve in the last year, so that feels correct. And this is tangential but separate from the current CDBG program that's happening right now. So we've been working on that project.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Ending balance is zero, not 62,814. So those funds must not be expended. They must only be committed?
You're talking about line G?
G versus C and the fact that it says, F says no new loans during the year.
Can we follow up and get clarity from them on that? Just how those two lines talk to each other?
Because I just don't, unless it's an incremental, I don't know how they expended load funds but didn't have any new loans.
It's possible they meant it as an encumbrance.
Right, okay. And if that's what it is, G makes sense to me, committed, but C doesn't. I wouldn't think committed is a withdrawal.
I will get you that clarity.
Any other questions on it?
I have none.
No.
We'll wait to accept it formally?
Yeah.
Review and approval of the professional services agreement with the Franklin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority?
So in your packets, there should have been a memo from Gina, the executive director. An amendment to your existing service contract that she would like you to entertain and then a copy of the contract that's coming due.
I assume it's believed to be sufficient addenda to meet term, section four of the original contract of renegotiating?
Section four of the previous contract?
Of the 10 years.
Of the 2013.
So it has to be renegotiated at 10 years max. I mean, I suppose maybe the addenda qualifies, but.
You have a, in the second line of section four, you have acknowledgement that it will automatically renew from a year-to-year basis. So this is more substantial than just doing, like resting on that.
Well, we're at the 10 years.
You're at the 10 years.
And that's a massive 10, so the next line says it must be renegotiated after that. And so I'm just asking as an addenda and agreeing to coming to another year term, which maybe it is, is sufficient to qualify as renegotiating.
You all, as the second As the second negotiating party in this agreement can handle it however you'd like. So with that understanding, it's sufficient if you believe it's sufficient. There's no competitive procurement process to contract with another governmental entity. So it can be a straight negotiation between the two bodies. The idea of a 10-year term makes the management of programs like the CDBG Fund and the Revolving Loan Fund more manageable, but there's no requirement for a 10-year term. So it can be a term of any duration that you believe is appropriate.
Yeah, we wish the fees weren't 24% to 26%, but... Gentlemen, what do you want to do with it?
Just double-checking the original document one more time.
Sure. I mean, it doesn't say what it's taking out or replacing or anything, so it's not quite... Probably...
I was gonna say, it's not really a negotiation, it's just an extension.
But even the addendum doesn't... It doesn't replace the term section, it doesn't amend the term section, it doesn't... Well, it says it amends it, but you can't have a max 10 and an extension every year in the same sentence. It would feel a little contradictory. I'm not saying that it's an issue if we're okay with it, but...
So instead, if your desire would be to just negotiate a new agreement, would you like to appoint somebody with the authority to work on that draft negotiation for you? So that we can get that in the process?
I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I don't think it's realistic to think we're going to do it in the next 30 days or 15 days. So I think we need to extend it to some degree no matter what.
Right.
Whether it's a year or not.
My comment was going to be extending it for the additional year. And like Brian said, it's loose terms. Can you call it a negotiation because we're amending the language of that one term? Sure, you can. And it's up to us, under our purview anyways, whether or not we want to do it. But I would say bring this back on our end earlier next year. Prior to the year termination of the contract and enter into some contract negotiations. Since we are at the end of a 10-year cycle, this will be year 11. Extending it for one more year. You brought up a great point about the fees and different, you know, pieces in there that we can look at. It hasn't been looked at in over a decade.
Right.
So.
Agreed.
But given the timeframe, we don't have the capacity in the next two weeks to really dive into a full contract negotiation with another entity and give it any substantial, you know, work.
Right. Agreed. Do you want to go a full year though, or do you want to go shorter?
One year.
Okay. We can always renew it sooner.
Yeah. I was gonna say, we could do something in, you know, August and start that conversation much earlier about another 10-year. A new, fresh 10-year.
Yep. I'd rather do it in that time period. It'd be in the fall, you know, summer, fall, and...
Yeah, late summer.
Everything else that we're doing right now isn't kind of all starting to creep up. Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to... amend the Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority contract... Excuse me. Rehabilitation Revolving Loan Program contract for an additional year through the... Doesn't really give an end date. March 11th was when we made it back in 2013.
It was 10 years from that date.
Yeah, it says in the body there, right above four term, I think.
3/11, yep, 2000. So one additional year from March 11th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With that, it is 7:02, so I will call the joint meeting with the Finance Committee to order. Welcome. So many places to start. So Brian provided an update, which I think is even further than the last Finance Committee meeting, where Governor Healy's administration released preliminary numbers, which were slightly more favorable than from prior years. So that was good. We also received the... Approved assessments, right, for Franklin Tech?
Right. Actually, just literally before this meeting, the capital assessment just came through as well.
I didn't look at that yet. Was that favorable?
Let me pull that back up.
More flat, probably.
I carried a flat number in the budget scenario.
Of $15,035?
Let's see.
Decrease. Looks like $13,580.
Yep.
So I will make that adjustment.
So has everyone had a chance to look at the draft recap or budget summary sheet?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll answer you, just so you have somebody that'll answer you.
Yes, FinCom reviewed the first draft at our meeting last week.
Okay.
Brian, just in case I forget again, the Tech School promised to send us their budget book, the presentation. Would you follow up with them and request that they email that to us?
I will do that tonight.
Thank you.
Brian, after the discussion back and forth about the recap that I had asked this week, last week, last week, is that the right starting number?
Yes.
Okay.
$12,777?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'll have to reread those again else, because I thought it wasn't.
Nope. That's the correct one.
Oh, Deb came back with something else, huh?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Of course.
So... A little more favorable than FinCom saw with the state charges and receipts updated in there now. They're better than we anticipated. However, we still have a... Depending on how we fund everything, because this also doesn't include lots of things that we traditionally do. Some, but it isn't them all. We're 800,000, almost 800,000 short. I guess for what I was looking at, there's a couple of things that were missing, or at least one thing is capital improvements. We only have a $125,000 coming out of RNA. I haven't finished the analysis, but I think over the last five-plus years, we've done between $500,000 and $1 million out of RNA capital every year. Either putting it in capital stabilization or spending it on capital expenditures in addition to free cash spend on capital. So I'm concerned about the sustainability if we even just leveled this in terms of future capital. Because we wouldn't have... Theoretically, we'd have $125,000 for capital every year if we didn't have free cash, which worries me. And... We had been putting some money into capital stabilization. I don't recall if Capital made a recommendation to do that or not this year, but obviously there's been some changes and I think they're meeting again, or maybe they already did, to come back with that. But we also have the $100,000 for the recycling center, which we just have as a placeholder right now, because we didn't discuss whether that's going to happen in this fiscal year or not. And under our other, you know, it's up $150,000, which I... Have to dig into. I will confirm when Brian comes back, but I believe that call out around wastewater fees and stuff, I believe it's excluded though from the RNA number. I believe it's already taken out. But I want to confirm that.
Okay.
So the $827 is the balance after the anticipated fees, I think, but... And so currently, we're at negative, what, 800, and we probably have $500,000 less capital-type things than traditional. And we had a million left over last year after.
After $637 in capital.
Right.
On RNA capital.
Yeah, RNA capital and $273 payback and capital stabilization $150, and yeah, all of it. So we're talking the two, I'm sorry, 2.2, 2.3 million dollar swing year over year.
I was just gonna say, typically when Capital started the Capital Stabilization, I believe we were actually putting in $250,000. And then at some point, budget got a little crunchy, and so we dropped it to $150. But I believe some of the very early appropriations were upwards of $2 or $250 for that stabilization account.
Yeah, I didn't get quite that far in my spreadsheet. But we also did general stabilization, which was in my spreadsheet, which we aren't doing, haven't been doing anything in general except paying back the library borrow or self-loan.
Right.
So for a little while, though, that's not new this year. Obviously, we'll acknowledge that the capital list is expensive, lengthy. It's a lot of money for this year, but it's...
All free cash.
All free cash, basically.
Well, $782,540.
Yeah.
Looking at free cash, you know, we have the general fund revenue at $1.323,266. Allocated down on our expenses, I'm only coming up with $1,244,255. So I'm just... Because there's only a couple of line items that allocate expenses through free cash, and that's capital improvement through free cash. And it was the two, the STM and the hold for the school of $150.
Does it also have the recycling center and the library? $273?
So I counted... The $273 was not through free cash, was it?
We all haven't decided yet.
Right. It's just there. It's not earmarked one way or the other. Right.
Yeah, the only ones that you've told me right now you're thinking about free cash, I've made a note on that. Obviously, that's subject to the decisions you all make, but...
The reason I ask is, you know, if you were to say the recycling center improvements come out, you know, of free cash, we've got about $79,000 of free cash. So that puts leftover that's already designated as free cash expenditures in this, you know, summary.
Sure.
You're already putting part of that improvement into operating costs that are coming through RNA. I just want to make sure that when you're, you know, when we're looking at this budget, that we don't... It's a big number of free cash that we have expended in there, and I want to make sure that that's not being folded into an operating budget in the eyes of, you know, the general public looking at it saying, oh, look at all the money we have to work with. This is one-time money that's there. So I want to make sure that we're parsing that back out to understand that it's not part of the RNA, it's not part of the general operating budget. It's strictly just free cash that we're using to augment our capital improvements and not add as an additional ongoing revenue source for operating expenses. We've earmarked almost all of the 1.3 million.
Between, assuming we did, the STM's out of free cash was all approved, the 150 hold, the $782?
Yeah.
And the recycling center?
And the recycling center. We'd actually be over by about $11,000.
Okay.
We'd expend about, you know, $1,334,000.
Just on that same note, maybe I'm missing something, but if I take... If I take fiscal '23 total revenue less free cash and fiscal '24 revenue less free cash, they're like equal at 13 million. Unless I'm doing my math wrong, which I would have thought it would have been favorable to this year. Between the 2.5%, the favorables, receipts, and charges.
You're talking about the drivers for free cash?
No. I'm just saying total revenue less free... Net of free cash. No, less free cash. So we had $13,978 last year. Less almost $900,000 of free cash brings you down to $13,84.
Right.
The current year, we have, we're showing $14.338 million in total revenue, less the $1.323. It gives you $13,15. So... Off the top of your head, or someone's, why are we actually having a net reduction in revenues year over year?
So I don't know if we are. Take a look at the FY '23. Yeah, I think so.
That's what I'm guessing.
State charges in '23 were put in as a... Not as a reduction. They were put in as a $340,000.
That would cause a problem.
That would cause about a $700,000 swing.
Yeah, it would. Okay. That's what I'm...
Yeah.
Thank you. So it's not going to help us in '24, but do year-over-year comparison?
Can buy.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was just doing, is punching those numbers in. And to get to the $13,978, you have to add in the state charges. And to get to the thirteen nine seventy-eight, you have to add in the state charges instead of deducting the state charges.
Oh, just, is there a way to adjust that speaker? It sounds like an echo chamber up here.
Is that better?
Sure.
Cast?
Cast, I don't know.
That's much better.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah.
Okay, I'm going to quickly make that change.
She like the first key gripper or something now? I don't know. Totally wrong terminology, I'm sure. So, that puts our prior year at something more like thirteen-two ninety-eight?
Thirteen million, two ninety-seven, one forty-eight.
Yep.
Okay. Less free cash would be twelve-three-oh-one. So, twelve million, three-oh-one.
Twelve-four.
Revenues.
Right, it was minus the eight ninety-six?
Yeah, you're right. Four-oh-one, thank you, or four. So, twelve-four was last year's revenues without free cash. This year, we're at thirteen oh fifteen, okay.
That makes...
That means the balance last year was also, not nine fifty-nine, dropped all the way down to what?
It's two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand eight twenty-five.
Okay.
I'm PDFing this and sending it to your email accounts now.
That sounds better. I was a little surprised we left a million dollars on the table on free cash and didn't do something else.
So, that was one of your drivers for free cash. You had not appropriated all of it.
Intentionally, I believe. The green March line, you have forty-one nine eighty-three last year. Is that just an STM from last year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, not necessarily March.
It was March fifth of last year, so...
We're going to have them one day apart.
Right. As soon as it's done processing, yes.
Yeah, we haven't gotten it either.
I'm just listening to him read numbers. I don't have them.
Yeah.
So, so back to my statement before, we are spending, what? If you say we're five hundred short in free cash expenditures versus normal, then we're short one-point-three plus two seventy-seven. So, we're, our year-over-year change is something in the one-five.
One and a half, yeah.
One and a half after six hundred thousand dollar increase in revenue.
Yes, so about, like you said, about two-point-one.
We're back to that number. That's... I know we usually have the luxury of not having these conversations, but that's, I'll just say, that's a ridiculous amount of money. I mean, that's more than ten percent year-over-year. If you have thoughts or comments, please chime in.
Just waiting to open up this new one.
Gotcha.
Thank you for the quick changes on that, Brian.
Okay.
Could you print off a copy? Just that page? Please? You got it?
So, I mean, I have yet to formulate sort of a, a plan of approach of how to mitigate that gap. But just the, there's some underlying pieces in here that, in my mind, are static, that we don't have the ability to touch. One of them being is the two assessments, the French County Tech and the Gilmaner Regional. We don't set those. They're not our numbers. They're assessed to us. We have to pay them. Those two are, you know, off the chopping block if we're talking about how much of this, you know... I mean, if you add in, it's actually more like a fifteen-point-one million dollar budget when you add in the free cash expenditures and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
But we can't touch those. And also, I would say the other line item is the benefits line item. It's a substantial line item at one-point-eight million, but we have to ensure that we have the capacity to have employees...
Thank you.
Increase benefit options, take on new benefit options if they haven't elected to do so yet. We can't streamline that line item and not allow for an increase of a certain number of staff to take advantage of those benefits. They have that legal right to do so, and we have to make sure we're funded. So, those three, in my mind, are, they're static. They're untouchable. There is a built-in additional padding in the one-point-eight. I've got the treasurer down there. I would just ask, you have enough room in there to take on a couple of higher-end plans that were unexpected, if somebody went from a single to a family, or, you know, so you have that wiggle room in there?
Three built-in plans.
Three built-in plans, okay. Yeah, and I wouldn't suggest that we itemize those down and make the assumption that, you know, we don't need that wiggle room. So, it doesn't leave a, a ton of places to look to make those adjustments. I heard your concern earlier about not putting into capital stabilization year-over-year. I'm, if, if, my fear is if we're cutting, currently, it's earmarked at the two-hundred-and-seventy-three for the library construction repayment, going back into general, and the one-fifty into capital. To me, those are bare-bones minimum. If we don't earmark money for that and we balance this budget without the capacity to raise and appropriate for general stabilization or capital stabilization, that's, that's a dwindling revenue source that will go away. And we won't have that capacity in future years. So, our ability then to do capital or stabilization funding from raise and appropriate will be gone without physically, at that point, cutting actual budgets, not cutting budget requests. You know, so currently, we're looking at potentially having to cut some requests that were made. If we accept all these, move them forward without the capacity to raise and appropriate stabilization, future cuts will be actual services, not just requested increases. Just want to put that in perspective.
If we cut the, and go into next year with the knowledge that our, um, capital budget would be less than the seven eighty-two that it was this year, like we were going to force it to be five hundred?
I want to just clarify, I agree with what you said, and it goes to what you're getting at. My comment wasn't only that, and, and I have to look back, I think the library payment was free cash last year. I think the capital stabilization was not, and that was the only stabilization funding, I believe, according to this. The, the, not only the one-fifty, but the fact that last year, what line am I on here? We raised and appropriated six-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars in capital. That's the half million that I'm more concerned about because we're only planning RNA at one twenty-five. Regardless of the whole picture being seven eighty-two of free cash plus one twenty-five RNA, regardless of the total amount of capital. If, to your question, if we don't put in the two seventy-three and the one fifty, level, you know, assuming two and a half percent increase next year across the board, we'd have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for capital in raise and appropriate capacity.
Total.
Total.
Yeah.
Where normally we're spending, I think when it's all said and done, it's higher than capital sinks when we talk about it because we often just look at the annual, and then there's specials where we also allocate more. But six, seven, five, six, seven, eight, a million dollars a year in capital. So, if we only have one thirty going forward, because that's how we balance it, I... That's going to cause the level of service to, to decline, right?
Yes.
Because if we're not investing, I just don't think we maintain that level of service.
And depending, the capital stabilization account could float for maybe a year. A bridge, a fire truck, anything big, that, that account's done.
All the things on the list?
Yes, they are.
That we keep kicking every year?
Yes. Uh, we owe Chief Wonka a fire truck from about three fiscal years ago, so...
Didn't mean to cut you off, Ben, if there was more to that thought, but that was, the seven eighty-two is free cash. I'm more worried about the RNA.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, it's not a whole lot of buckets that you can drop down a whole lot lower to reach eight hundred thousand dollars. Trying to throw something out there.
I tend to agree with what you said, Scott, about, you know, what we can and can't touch. Benefits is only up one and a quarter percent.
Right.
Secondary and tech combined is down. I didn't do the percentage, but, um, it's probably very small, but it's down three, four thousand dollars based on the tech school numbers coming back, because secondary, we level funded as we discussed.
Right.
So...
So, level funded with the idea that we have the capacity, should the enrollment numbers come back higher than anticipated, that we have the ability for them to come back in a special. However, if we're balancing this down to zero and not leaving that capacity, then the idea that we tell them, let's crunch those numbers, let's level fund now, and we'll have the capacity to come back to the town and ask for more money in the future, that capacity is no longer there. So, when we, when we talk about trying to crunch down and, and fill a gap of seven hundred and eighty-seven, we should probably be looking at a little over one-point-one, one-point-two million in order to have that capacity that we have had in the, in the past years.
Or count on the fact that we'll have enough free cash once it's certified, which, that's a hedge. Is it likely, but with these kind of budgets?
I don't know. I really don't want to get into, uh, I don't want to put the town in a spot where we're relying on and anticipating what our potential free cash is in the future in order to balance a budget. It's a, that's a dicey game to get into. And as, as nasty as this business can be about, you know, looking at not accepting budget requests and cutting the budget requests in order to, you know, balance our budget and keep it stable going forward, as ugly as that can be, the flip side of that of just getting it to zero, moving it forward, fast forward two or three fiscal years from now, we're in a whole different world. When we're, every year, we're looking at, you know, what additional revenue source are we getting? Do we have enough free cash to even balance our, you know, our raise and appropriate is not enough anymore in order to balance our budget? And we are then relying on a, a third revenue source or a secondary revenue source. That one doesn't sit well with me. That's why I said it's a little more than the eight hundred thousand in order to have that capacity.
Oh, it's, it's more than the eight hundred plus five hundred plus capacity, right? If you want to, if we want to have the kind of normal capital improvement level as well, and not count on free cash for it.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, let's be honest. I know, you know, Deb, I heard you say we, we, we owe the chief a fire truck that we promised him three years ago. We may have to, you know, look at our twenty-five-year capital plan a little more. Given, given these numbers, the way they were presented, um, when we start asking all department heads, what is your expected, you know, usefulness out of the life of this product that you're buying? And we hear, you know, a vehicle is, or a, a fire truck is twenty years, or, or, you know, a police cruiser is, you know, seven years, or whatever they are, whatever, you know, apparatus we're buying. While it's nice to know that we have an ever-revolving overturning of equipment, and we have the fresh, newest equipment, and those are great services to have, we may not be able to sustain that.
One step ahead.
Yeah.
We are, we have talked for quite some time, vehicles specifically, that the capital would like to see a vehicle replacement policy from the town, and, and that kind of spells out a lot of that. So, that is something that we do plan on working kind of in our off-season on.
Yeah, given these numbers, it's going to, you know...
Yeah.
The pie in the sky, it's great to have the new shiny toys, you know, and, and all the bells and whistles every couple of years, but we just may not be able to afford that. Just to note, I know I asked Brian this earlier before the meeting, but just to say it out loud, it's not a huge amount of money, but none in, there are no cost of living adjustments embedded into this outside of the elementary school. The elementary school, when they created their budget, because they're in a negotiation session, had to earmark a certain percentage that they were willing to say, we're going to earmark this in good faith of negotiating. We don't have that embedded in here. So, when we do get to that conversation of what is the town looking at, you know, I think we had thrown around the number, every percentage point is about another ten thousand, give or take, because we have about a million dollars a year in salary. So, just to keep that in mind.
FINCOM talked about that at our meeting, and also, not just like a cost of living, but it is our third year. So, it's wage study review.
Yep.
There is nothing set aside in this. If we want to change our wage tables or anything like that, we also don't have funding now set aside for that either.
Correct.
We also don't have whatever the IT increase costs will need to be for the insurance mandate, which is confirmed. I don't know if we said that in the last meeting, to be a mandate. It's not a option or negotiable. It's a must-do by July one.
We'll open the plan in two weeks. Yes, we implemented June thirty.
So, there'll potentially be a conversation with FINCOM for this year, too.
I was going to say...
With a reserve fund transfer, but just to get to the implementation, but then there'll be a recurring cost that we have to plan for.
And that was the, was that the forty thousand that you guys were talking about last week, or at the last meeting?
I can try to pull a rough number.
I think that sounds about right.
I don't know. I threw something at the wall, so it was really, really rough, and I didn't have it...
Based on the number of employees, number of licenses, and, and all recurring, yeah.
There's a couple of different ways to get there. We'll, I'll look at a couple of other ways that are less expensive, at least for now, to, to get us through for a couple of years, maybe. Maybe we don't get to where we'd like to be right away, but get us at least the minimum required. So, we'll work in the next two weeks to get as close to a final number as we can because that'll obviously be, again, it's not hundreds of thousands, but it's just another item.
All right, now, every penny is counting, so...
Absolutely. Brian, I had a question on the wastewater annual RNA. It doesn't include money receipts, and that means the eight twenty-seven also does not include the amount that they will pay? So, the budget's higher than that? I just didn't pull up the budget sheet. Do you follow what I'm saying? There's an anticipated amount of receipts that's already subtracted?
Correct.
That gets us to the eight twenty-seven?
That's correct.
Okay, because it's like over a million.
That's correct.
Okay. I was really hoping you were going to say no, even though I probably knew better. I mean, I was just going down quickly, the operating budgets, and almost over, all, all of them are double or more digit percent increases.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that's not... That just doesn't work. Not when you have two and a half. And that's not even getting into anything like capital.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
When we met earlier this week, did we ask for a, what would each department, department's operational budget look like if we were flat as opposed to what it was last year, except for the price of oil and electricity going up?
I can do that exercise. The only other consideration you have to change for great step changes.
Yeah.
But we can, we can do that exercise. I think I need direction from the seven of you as to what you want for information for your next meeting. And so, if that's a scenario that you're asking for, we can pull that together.
I mean, I'm just going, taking a quick peek at the capital list, and I would say there's stuff in here that could come off. Maybe, but it doesn't solve our problem, because it's just putting it back into free cash, which means we're still just budgeting with free cash.
Right, I was just gonna say the same thing.
It's six of one, half of the other.
Because we only RNA'd 125,000, unless that's the one item that you're saying, but then you, you butt up against the other idea of if we're not investing RNA funds for capital and solely relying on free cash, then year over year, you have no idea what you're gonna be able to expand.
And my concern is also, if we're talking about, what is it, I don't know, 15, 20% budget increase? That's the request here. Then if we do bring it, we've got to balance it, right? And we do, and let's say we don't do anything to fund any capital hypothetically out of RNA, and we just count on free cash, we're still 10-plus percent, the, the requests are still 10% higher than we budget.
Correct.
So what free cash will there be? Because we're 10% off, and we don't get 10% free cash, we usually get five. This was an exception this year.
Yeah.
Five percent, so. Even if we just took the 500,000 out, which is basically another two and a half percent on top of the two and a half we have. There's still, you know, 10% more. So that's very risky, I guess, I'm just saying. I'm sure it's kind of the elephant in the room, but it's not. Basically, our entire new revenue capacity for this fiscal year is absorbed by the change in the elementary school. Almost 100%, which leaves nothing else to be able to go up at all, if that doesn't go down. Because that's 541,000 dollars on the request, and our change in revenue was 616,000 dollars, so we have 50,000 dollars to do anything else with, if that doesn't go down.
Well, I think if we're looking at scenarios that include cutting, it has to be looked at town-wide. It's not, we can't pit departments against departments and, and that sort of thing, so if we're asking, you know, the non-school department heads to come back to us with, you know, 0% budget increases, then I think the same has to be asked of the school.
But I'm, I didn't mean it to come across that way, if it did, I just want to call it out, because I know it's a contentious subject, and those are the numbers, just to, just to put it out there for people to understand what that means. You know, our, our complete ability to increase our budget year over year is absorbed by that, basically, so. And it can't be, I guess, I agree with you, it can't be, it has to be, we have to, everyone has to make cuts to get back to balance, we can't do that. In my opinion.
Brian, inside this education, 5.8, you, I know we, the school committee had voted and pulled out transportation costs.
Yep.
Those are still allocated in that 5.8, correct?
There should be a second page in your packet.
If you go up two or three pages from that one, it has the school. Or the, in the better packet, the next one. Above that.
You got two, two tabs up.
It's got the 180 and the three something.
So just, for now, I've created a, a to-be-determined line item in the elementary school budget that would live on the town books. And I kept that the 180,000 dollar number, because we don't have a revised number at this point.
Off the top of your head, Brian, the last line, other special, that's up about 160,000, what is in the increase? Do you know off the top of your head?
Kind of close, if I go back to the other one. Oh, you're talking about the recurring.
Yeah, the last, yeah, last line of expenses.
Yes. Should have given you that breakdown, because I gave it to the FinCom. Quickly pull that up.
I know where we're at. More for me, for me to ask, you didn't go find it myself.
Two more seconds, and then we'll have.
No, you're fine.
I have it.
They can be the savior.
That is like the assessors, it's their defense fund, it's revaluation, it is restoring of permanent records, town building maintenance, I don't have the increases. Around town space, miscellaneous bridge repairs, highway road work, road work improvements, the wheel loader lease, and the transfer to the OPEB trust fund.
So I know, the wheel loader is 50, 50K, right? And that is new. That's new, that is new for sure.
It is new, so the highway road work and improvements, you all took several years off in funding that? You used to fund it 150,000 dollars a year, and then you did several large projects? And so you made a conscious decision not to fund that line item? And now that we're hopefully coming to the end of some of the big projects, but we have to do more culvert repairs and some of the other work, Glenn had asked you all to consider funding that again, so that was the 100,000 dollar request. Missed bridge repairs you haven't funded in several years, and so that was a 5,000 dollar request to start building that fund back up, so we can do preventive maintenance. So those were, I guess, the new ones. Around town space, the charge for the ad space went up by 500 bucks, I believe. And the only other change was assessment, assessors' defense, I think.
55 for the lease, it was 105 for the two road and bridge, right?
Yep.
That is the difference.
Yeah, that's the 160.
That is the 160.
Yeah.
Year over year, that is the difference.
Okay, there you go.
Those are the, the 55 is another, we can't do anything about it, we have to pay that.
We've entered into that lease.
We, we agreed to it, so we're, we're locked into that one, too.
Did you say that we could drop the, or lower the electronic records?
Yeah, so that's one area where you all have made some annual investments in, and I believe the four offices that typically do the record preservation had taken a break last year from sending some records in, so I think we have sufficient appropriation there, so we took a year or so off from funding that line item, this existing capacity. That's a change of 20,000 dollars. I, I think we're at a point, depending on the discussion and where you all give direction today, you'd be going through every category like that and looking for anything that, that we need to take a break from.
I don't know about all of you, but I feel like some of those big ones, those are things that we can do, or at least tentatively think about right here, I mean, I don't, those are things that I think we need to at least come to a likely recommendate, a likely decision, or, you know, leaning toward what we're gonna do. I was gonna pull up the capital list for what we do have in the budget already, and I think it would lend to say we're doing a lot, whether it's grant or funded or whatever, we've got Bridge Street, you know, we've got the culverts, the wheel lock culverts, we've got a lot of project, and that's a lot of highway road construction type work. Regardless of the funding source, I just don't see the 105 being a this year investment. And I feel like those last handful of large projects over the last three to five years, we've been funding whatever it took to complete the project in that year, or in two years, out of pocket, basically, or out of grant and match and free cash and whatever it was, well above 100,000 dollars, which is what it used to be. But if I recall, it was put 100 in for three years, then take it all out and go do something with the chapter 90 money as, as the other portion, and go do a half a million dollar road project. Instead, we're just throwing a half a million dollars in and saying, go do it. Whenever we decide we're ready, so I, I don't know if that. I guess if the issue is that there's just some routine maintenance that we're not doing, that doesn't sound like this, it sounds like it should be an operating cost. If this is project work, then I don't think we should fund it this year.
It's project work. It's meant to replace, like you had the failed culvert on top of Mountain Road that we had to replace, that was about a 10,000 dollar repair, once you had materials, equipment, all of that stuff. And so there are a number of items like that that would benefit from being proactively addressed, as opposed to waiting for them to fail. And so it was, it was trying to do that.
I don't know what you all think, I mean, the 105, just, just taking it because it's a large chunk right away, and.
Yep.
You know, your example, then, do we put 10, 15, 20 in, and say, save it until one breaks, or, you know, it's next, it's the following spring, and go proactively fix one? Yeah, you know, I don't know, prioritize the worst one and do one a year, I mean, maybe, but I don't see 105. Is there a recommendation or thoughts of any, some, none? Tentatively, I mean, it's all tentative, right? We're just gonna try and to get to a new number.
I'd be leery not to do any. We've had experiences, you know, our 100-year storm hit, and, you know, we're gonna have those kind of things, so I would be concerned to not do anything to have some, you know, funding there for some preventative stuff. What that number is, I don't know, I don't know if, you know, does 10,000 dollars cover a culvert? I, looking at the Wheelock project, I'd say no, so. I don't know what the right number would be, but I definitely think there should be something.
Say, on average, what kind of money do we have to put towards failures every year? Not to fix something, to keep it from failing, but failures.
So the, the one that we had to deal with up on Mountain Road was the first one in a while, but that was in the center of the road, so you literally had to cut the pavement, dig it out, replace the structure, rebuild it, and then repave it. So you're talking about some of that work being able to be done by in-house staff and with our equipment, and other things have to be, like the paving has to be outsourced, and that's prevailing wage work. So it's taking the situation, mobilizing for these small pieces. So you're not getting the most efficient use of those time, every time you're doing a small little job, it's better sometimes when you can sort of have them target several jobs at once, but I think 10,000 would be on the light side of doing a culvert replacement for a typical-sized road. And to Deb's point, the Wheelock street is a different, it's a different approach completely, but that's an active stream crossing, and so that's continuous flow, as opposed to you're just having basically a dry channel under a road until it actually has a rain event. So this was targeted more towards the stormwater infrastructure that is really just sort of county drains and, and things along the sides of most of our roads, not active streams.
Now, was that part of that, wasn't there a study done about the drainage system?
So we, so to Charlie's point, we, I think it was three years ago now, contracted with Cog, and they went out and they inventoried all of our catch basins and our culverts, the ones that they could find. We found a couple additional ones afterwards, but that's good, we have, we have well over 100. So we have a decent inventory, we have an assessment of the visual inspection, and Glenn was able to target our annual cleaning program to work on the ones that were higher need. Some just need reconstruction, they're stacked stone, they're failing. And so he was trying to start to prioritize that work of replacing the ones that were identified as higher risk, that needed more than what a preventive cleaning could do. It may need some reconstruction work, so. But that, that report is what we're basing some of this work on, and then anything that's changed in the last three years.
So it sounds like if we were to take out the roadwork piece at 105, the electronic documentation piece at 25, we could still put in 20 or 25 for emergency and be able to take 100 off, if I'm, if my math works without my calculator.
I think your math works without your calculator. We're pretty close. Close enough.
Could I ask, I understand the reluctance to just put in nothing, but if, if something fails and it may cost 10 grand, it's certainly an unforeseen thing, might that be funded through a reserve fund transfer? And put nothing in here?
That would be up to the seven of you.
But.
Yep. That would be up to the seven of you.
I, I seem to recall we increased it from 20, 25 to 50, or 30 to 50? Just a few years ago, because we did away with one of the two, like, town building kind of catch-all funds, I think. And so we increased that a little bit, and then I think we also recommended increasing the reserve fund just to have capacity for the what if.
So why, kind of dropping the bucket towards the whole thing here, but.
Knock on wood, we haven't, we haven't run up against it, except maybe the generators, the last thing I can remember that was a real emergency, other than, you know, act of God-type stuff that we had to deal with, that was beyond the capacity of reserve fund. I don't know if you all remember anything else, I mean, I hope not.
And I, just wanted to chime in, I agree with things mostly you have all said, Scott in particular, is that, you know, we're trying to rob Peter to pay Paul, but five years from now, you know, Peter's gonna come back and say, I'm bankrupt, you robbed me too much, you know, it's gonna catch up to you, so be careful, but. To me, in addition to the things that you can't touch, your benefits and things like that, is the increases that we just have no choice for. I mean, the state says you're gonna do this, you're gonna do it, whether it's special ed or whatever it is. And we still have to pay them, they're real costs, and it's real money. But I, I give that a little bit more of a pass than somebody that just says, well, we'd like to have, you know, whatever it is. It'd be really nice to have the stuff. People used to have in the stuff. But I just think we should be sensitive to those budgets that have things in them that they can't change. I mean, everybody knows electricity and fuel, that's, that's kind of a given, we don't have to complain that to anybody. And I don't know what all the other ones are. We discussed about the recycling thing. I don't have an opinion on what we should or shouldn't do, but it seems like it's gonna be an ongoing expense, if we're gonna have a couple of people there, you know, staffing a station, and maybe people want that. I mean, I'm sure, if you're gonna get rid of a TV or get rid of a Mac or something, you want to bring it here instead of going somewhere else, but, you know, does it for Cog have any, you know, regional thing that we might participate in? Or deal with Montague Orange to bring recycled stuff there, perhaps, I don't know. But it seems like that recycle thing's gonna be an ongoing expense. It's also, would be an ongoing benefit, maybe a lot of people want that, but it's something to look at. I think the only other thing on my mind was, and I don't know all the ins and outs of the treasuries here, and I defer to what, what the treasurer says, but it's my understanding, there are only a handful of states that are anywhere near close. Out of 351 cities and towns, not states, cities or towns, a handful that are anywhere near close to fully funding their OPEB, you know, or retirement requirements. And as much as we'd all like to just be fully funded and ready to go, we're not in any immediate danger of not being able to pay anybody that's retired what they do. And if we're ahead of most everybody else in the state, maybe we slow down on that a little bit. Incrementally, put in a little bit less, I think there was 300,000, was that in there for that?
Right, yeah.
Again, those are, they're not pleasant or wonderful ideas, I'm not thinking they're great, but I think they're things we could look at.
They actually are further from being fully funded than we had anticipated. We just recently got an email saying that it pushed out a few years.
I don't, I'm not aware there's a deadline where everybody has to comply by a certain date. If there was such a deadline, I think wealth RECO is the state on the mission.
Maybe, and then some. I thought the same thing, and I was gonna ask, I was gonna try to look it up, when, when that new date was. It's still, at least in my mind, that's not that far away.
No.
Going to zero, I wouldn't, personally don't think is the right decision, but does it need to be 300? If you're keeping pace to some degree, I mean, if we're that close, I don't know that, you know, what's that, three, four years of 300,000 dollars? So is it six or nine of 100? That doesn't sound that bad to me with the amount of money that's in there, you know, it's a lot of money in there.
I just want to say, too, as much, as much as I'm. And I just want to say too, as much, as much as I'm typically a supporter of education and our education budgets, in particular elementary schools, as Scott said, we have no choice on tech, tech school or secondary. And I still support them, what they're doing, and giving kids a good education. But if we come, if we come down to it, we need to cut somewhere. We're not gonna balance this budget off the Recreation Commission saying, "Don't hold summer pack." You're not gonna cut it. I mean, there's, I don't see any other way than to ask that there be some participation there. And I don't know what it is. I don't know what they do or how their budget works, but I just see it has to, it has to go around some. Much as I don't like saying that, I don't see any way around it. Somebody has to, I guess.
Well, you're right. Just why I noted it earlier, just to say, like, I can't, I don't think we can do it without everyone participating. This is gonna have to be every department, every, you know. And to, to the mandated, I mean, probably argue the, I don't remember the number, 300, 400,000 of that is mandated. We don't have a choice. It's new expenses that we just have to absorb, right? There's a special ed cost and the transportation, whatever that number is, we don't actually really, I don't think. Maybe we can do something with transportation, but we don't have the ability to say that doesn't get funded. So it's gonna have to come out with the rest of it, if it's not gonna be, if it's gonna come down, right? So. And that's not, that's what the school will figure out, but I just, just in terms of things that we have to do, those are, that's another have to do, so. The only piece about OPEB is we, it, it's just a permanent change in capacity, likely. If we drop that down to 100 from 300, that $200,000 raise and appropriate is never gonna come back, right? Because now we're budgeting at, at higher level for other, the rest of the services, and just, it just raises concern, right? I mean, anything we do here raises concern. It's, it's, it's not a place we've had to be, fortunately, but, but I don't think it's a bad idea to go down some. I'm done, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. It just, it raised a question when you brought up OPEB. If I could lean on you, Jen, what do we expend out of that fund annually?
We don't expend anything.
Nothing currently, correct?
I could, I could happily reach out to Parker Elmore, the Odyssey funders, to see if we put in 150, how, how far that would push us out to be fully funded. Just, just to run that exercise, if you wanted, it's up to you.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know if it extends it out another five years or another, you know, 20 years, based on the return on investment and how quickly we recap that money.
I thought that article indicated that, that most of the issues with OPEB was, was, was not how much we were putting into OPEB, but it was the, the stock market and, and the hit to investments throughout the, out the country.
Right. Yeah, that was, that is why we were pushing that further, exactly.
Yeah, I just pulled it up. It's 2032. It's not 2028.
2032?
Yeah. I just pulled up your email from, from when you forwarded, you sent us that, so. But it was market, 14, almost 14% in the market. Maybe that comes back, and maybe we're not in that position in a couple of years, right? Maybe, maybe. Now we're back to ifs and hedges, but it's all we have, right?
Yeah, but the market's cyclical anyways. There's no way to give you a, it's gonna be done in 2027. The market goes down again by 14%, we're three years away again.
Goes up 28%, we're, we have extra. Can we withdraw? No, anyway. What, we have 300 in the budget, right?
Probably yes.
You said 150, but I would propose 100, just to understand. I don't feel like any, you just think anything lower is even an option?
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. So there's a floor. See what 100 would do, that number, if you would?
How about both? Or any scenario that you?
Or maybe, yeah, maybe two, 150.
If it's not a big exercise, does it get all those? Sure. Assuming it's not, it's not gonna be linear, it'd be, you know, 39 and 46, but it's not gonna be that way, of course. Was there anything else in that special article list? You guys have it. I don't know if I had it handy. That looked like something to challenge. I mean, we said 105, right? And then there was, the records was another 20, is that?
Yeah, the records is, records was 20,000. I mean, I don't think there's much we can do with the assessments defense or the assessors' reevaluation. Town building maintenance, $30,000. Around town, we could, $7,500.
If we have to sacrifice the around town, I don't know. I hope we don't.
Miscellaneous bridge repairs, $5,000. I think that's. Yep, yep. And so you already took care of that. The wheel loader, we have to do. And then we just discussed the OPEB for 300.
So it sounds like maybe 325 is exhausted, what we can do there. Potential.
Some stripping.
Highway, bridge, 200 of OPEB, just to end the records. As a potential. Obviously, probably only keep all these redlined and come back to them as we, if we ever get to positive.
Am I hearing it right? Sometimes I can't hear down here so good, but it seems like we're almost halfway to, not quite, but almost halfway to the, to the 700 and something. 325, so. Not quite halfway.
That's if we believe 125 is recurring capital is enough, which I don't. Honestly, I just don't think that's a good place to be.
Knowing what's coming up, like what's on the plan and projects that are coming and things like that, I, I feel it would be very bad practice for us to keep it at 125. I mean, we are up, as you said, upwards anywhere of, from four to a million, depending on how you add all those numbers up and everything. So I think a minimum of 500 for capital is kind of the requirement. I mean, I don't know how long people are gonna, you know, not want to have things like Swamp Road Bridge or, because those are, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to fear factor, but those are some of the projects that are coming up that are, are big. I mean, we, you know, we're doing the Bridge Street retaining wall and all that project this year for almost half a mil. And so, I mean, there's, that's what the capital is for this year for that one. I mean, there's just, 500,000 is like bare bones for some of the projects. I mean, yes, there is stuff that definitely, you know, just looking at the list, there's a few things I, I see that I would say we could go back to our department head and speak with them and say, you know, "You really gotta tell us why you have to have this now." But I think anything, you know, less than 500 annually is just not gonna cut it.
And a couple of these I might have written, right, there are my notes to bring up and discuss, but I think it's a good point. We haven't even gotten Swamp Road Bridge to that point, and that's likely borrowing, I mean, unless we're gonna take it out of stabilization. And that's millions, and that's a debt service that we have to fund, we are funding today. And that becomes an operating cost. And Church Street Bridge, I know, I'm preempting it, unless you wanna give that great news. It, it, we've been chasing, what, county tip? I, I don't even know. State and county money for that bridge, so that was nothing out of borrowing or out of pocket. And we've been at it for a year, I wanna say, and they've, DOT has determined that we are not 25% somehow. And so it won't be funded in this fiscal cycle, and it's questionable in the next two. So if we wanna move forward, which is a next meeting topic with Church Street Bridge, I'm not suggesting we discuss it tonight, but what's a million dollar, a $2 million borrowing, whatever that is, debt service, or, you know, is that 2 million more we take out of stabilization? And how many projects can we do that with? Because we have the IP mill on our list, too. And that is now more money, which we haven't discussed yet tonight. And if that's a borrowing and not a stabilization, I mean, at some point, just those products, projects could take half our stabilization, if we didn't wanna borrow. But if we borrow, there's a debt service, and that's gonna be multiple six figures to cover them both. Which means we have to have capacity to pay that, which means a completely level-funded budget that year just to absorb the debt capacity, so. They're all hard decisions, but I think we need to make the right ones this year, or we're going to be making a lot of these every year for a lot longer.
We're gonna make, be making much more harder to make ones. I mean, right now, I think we have the luxury of saying, "We could live without this, or we could live without that." Maybe if we don't cut appropriately now, in our following fiscal years, it's not gonna be a choice. It's just gonna have to be, this is what gets cut. There's no two ways about it, unfortunately.
I agree. The recycling center, I mean, I'll just, it could be a free cash conversation, but I just, let's touch on it right now. I mean, how long have we been going without anything? Three, four, five months?
Yep. It was, it was a push to return to normal services that we had offered down there, but if that's not viable right now, I'm fine with saying that it's just not a service that we offer. Things have to get cut somewhere.
I, I think to end of what you said, there is a fair number of already existing regional relationships and, you know, solid race district stuff. Is that the right one? Right? I got that right? Thank you. That, you know, is available. It's not as convenient, it's not as often, or whatever, right? But it, they do exist already. I don't know if it covers everything, so we'd probably have to revisit that. But I guess I would ask, and get some information from Glenn on what he's hearing from the public, being kind of more of the face of that area, and how it's been since the closure, you know, past the first couple of weeks, or when people just weren't used to it. But I, I tend to agree. I don't think we can, something like 100,000 to solve that right now, regardless of where it comes from. I don't know what you all think.
100,000 now to resolve that upfront, with a recurring of staff continual charges.
Which we'll probably have a rough estimate on next meeting, I believe. But still, you're right. The recurring is almost worse. The free cash could fund it, maybe, maybe not, but the recurring is the problem right now. Is that kind of a tentative? It's off the list for now?
I would say it's off.
Go on a future capital plan, maybe.
Is next year the last year for the library stabilization payment?
If, if we count the transfer we did last, this fiscal year, last fiscal year, from the remaining money in the solar account back to stabilization, which I think was around 177,000, and the 100,000 that we still project to get from the lead certification sometime, hopefully, if not this fiscal year, next fiscal year. If you counted those, yeah, we'd be actually overpaid slightly, 20,000 or something, or 5,000.
So that would make next year look a little better for us. We'd have that money to use elsewhere, perhaps.
Next year's the last payment.
Yeah.
The following year, then stabilization theoretically is back whole. And we could approach the next borrow-from-ourselves project, if that's what we wanted to do. I mean, we have a lot of big ones, right, that are looking further and further away, as I'm looking at this budget, in capacity, so. And I could look back, but I do believe we've done the payback out of free cash every time. I'm not proposing that that was a raise and appropriate expenditure. I think that was always free cash going back in. You know, that's my speculation, but. Probably for our next meeting, I was going to put together just a kind of a summary of our overall capital and stabilization expenditures every year for the last five or so years, just to get a sense of where does it come from and how much have we been doing? Because I think just understanding how different is it to put that risk in a little better perspective? I mean, we can look at it year over year, but over a longer period of time, what's the trend? Maybe last year was a little high, maybe it was a little low, so where does that put us looking forward? Brian, do you recall, do you agree that generally our library stabilization payback was always out of free cash?
It's dependent from year to year.
Okay, never mind. I don't need the detail, I just, it's my opinion.
It's one of those articles where you sometimes add inflow that, depending on where the mix is of what you've raised and what you've had left over for free cash.
We can, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, we can go back and forth on whether we do the library payment, or we do all of the capital out of, that, that's listed out of free cash, whether we, you know, try to fund some capital stabilization out of free cash. But at the end of the day, those are all free cash changes. They don't change the overall raise and appropriate problem. So I would just propose, if we're trying to have some high-level discussions about where are we gonna go with these tonight, that we just skip that grouping and come back to it as more of a free cash and a what-now discussion in a future meeting.
Yeah, I think for, for a long time, we've looked at it that way, that, you know, free cash is, well, the library repayment is more than a one-off, but it's typically a one-off thing. It's not, not part of your operating budget, or you're just getting in trouble later.
I guess that just leaves us operating budgets to go back to from there. And I was just going through really quick to see what, to your point, rec, dollars won't necessarily move the needle, even if the percentage looks big, so. I was kind of doing the both exercise, and I haven't gotten all of them done, but I'm not seeing too many that are more than 50 to 150,000 outside of education at the moment. Not to say that every bit doesn't need to contribute. They should. We all need to. Whoever raised the question about step changes plus energy costs as a baseline, I'd be curious, because I'm almost wondering if some of those energy costs exceed 2.5% by themselves.
Do you want me to do that exercise with the departments?
If it's not a.
If it's not a heavy lift?
Yeah.
For a point where we kind of have to.
Yeah. And I think it's across the board, everywhere, every department, every, every budget. What's level plus step plus?
And the other, the other piece, if we're looking for pockets, we put as a placeholder 200,000 in overlay. Comes off the revenue side ahead of time. That's, that's an ideal number to put in there. I think we're a little over 2 million in the overlay account now.
2 million, correct?
Right around 2 million. I know the ATB cases far exceed that, if those, if those are lost, so, you know.
If that happens, we're shutting stuff down.
Correct.
Much more difficult, or we have no stabilization and then some.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, if we, you know, ideally, it's nice to keep putting in a couple hundred thousand, but ideally, it's also nice to put in 500,000 in general stabilization. It's also nice to put in, you know, 100, 250,000 in capital stabilization. These are all nice things to do. So it's, it's one of those items where if we, if we needed another line that we were looking at for, to close that gap, there's 200,000 that could close it. It's not one of those that you wanna see go away.
I was gonna say, are we comfortable that we just don't put it in anymore, though? Because that, that's the premise of taking it away, right?
That's the, yeah.
I'm not saying at one time I don't disagree, but from a recurring.
Well, which gap are we trying to close? Almost 800 or almost 1.2? Because, I mean, if, once you add, if you put in, you know, we're at almost 800, and let's say we even put in 400 for capital every year, then we're up at 1.2.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, my mind told me that the number that we're shooting for is between 1 and 1.2 in order to have the capacity to balance this budget and have future capacity to function, and not just balance it at a zero with no room for growth anywhere in future fiscal years. If we do that, then your two and a half, you know, raise and appropriate allowable by law every year, that's it. That's your, that's your growth. So at that point, if we come, if we balance it at zero this year, every department next year, I do not wanna see a budget come back that's more than 2.5%, and that's inclusive of COLAs and steps and everything. So find where you're gonna cut it from to, you know, match those.
And your capital needs.
And your capital needs. So. Seeing two members out, and I'm gonna put a little bullseye on two of the members that are of the school committee that are out there. We're dancing around it, you know, dancing around these numbers. Uh, you can hear the, the concern we have trying to close the gap. And I know the work that you all did at the last meeting and the meeting before that, and three or four meetings before that, to try and come to terms with your own, uh, portion of your requested budget to come to the town. But as the numbers finally flesh out, and like, you see we're trying to close the gap of, you know, uh, depending on which scenario you think the town should go with, anywhere from eight hundred thousand to one point two million dollars. I don't know when your next school committee meeting is scheduled for, but I would ask that you put your, uh, budget back on there to... I know that's your, typically your budget hearing meeting, correct? Your March meeting?
No, we've already had, I mean, we have already...
You had your budget vote, but then there's typically the...
Or it's still on the, the...
Okay.
To go ahead and revisit.
Thank you. I mean, arbitrarily, we could sit up here and just say, we're gonna take X amount off that line, and, uh, but we would much rather have the school committee work with the administration and figure out what portion of that are you willing to, you know, take on? Uh, one point two million is a lot for the town to cut outside of, uh, outside of the school. Well, I'll, I'll say, I'll, I'll rephrase that a little bit. It's impossible for us to balance that without the school contributing a little bit more of the, uh, gap coverage. We just, we'd have to dismantle departments in order to come up with one point two million. Eric?
I just want to say, as a, as a business owner who is trying to grow, where ten years ago, we tried to build a gas station, and we would be paying more tax revenue because businesses pay more than residents. So maybe the select board could look toward the planning board and say, hey, reduce, reduce what we're, what, I'm a businessman trying to grow to pay more taxes. And I think the planning board is restricting us in a lot of options. We wouldn't be here today. Now, I know a gas station at, at, when the head's convenience store would have been nice for a lot of people. We would have paid more taxes, but maybe not one point two million that you're looking for, but would have been a start.
I don't disagree with the tax base, but at the end of the day, the voters voted it down, so I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that blame on the planning board necessarily. I understand the zoning got you there, but, but, um, at the end of the day, the voters spoke, and I, I wouldn't challenge that as the wrong thing. I, I also think we want more business. Like, we talk about it administratively frequently. We want to be business-friendly. Our tax rate is business-friendly, even though, absolutely, that we shift as much burden to the commercial and, you know, as we can.
Sure do.
Absolutely. And it's still highly favorable to our surrounding towns. But that's not enough, and, you know, the whole discussion about ATB cases and stuff, you know, the potential risk there is not only, you know, say twelve million dollars, or whatever that number is, it's big.
It's about, about nine million dollars.
So that doesn't only have potential to wipe out tons of savings, that all re, also reduces what our total revenue is in the future, because that's the new norm, is some lower tax rate for our biggest taxpayer, so. I mean, the risks are high, and it's not just one. There's multiple taxpayers there, but, so. I just say that to say, you know, we, we have to be conscious of that. I know we often talk about it, and there's some that have lived here long enough to have seen, you know, risks of lots of different types of, of that revenue going somewhere else, and the effort that went into keeping it here, but they're still, I mean, they're in relicensing right now. There's lots of, you know, there's lots of things that are out of our control that we just need to be conscious about it, and... You know, I, I agree, you know, about, we provide a very, uh, a great education to our children in the town, but at an expense that exceeds our surrounding towns and, you know, surrounding, that have similar student populations and, and many cases have better MCAS scores and, and all of those sorts of things. Not to say we're doing anything wrong, but just that this isn't sustainable, and this is showing it to us, so. And it is, to your point, it's a third of our budget, is, is just the elementary school, not the overall education, so. It's, not to harp on it, I know you've been trying, but we need more. And you're not alone. The message is going out to all the department heads, so don't, don't think we're just focusing on school. Eric?
On, on the school committee side, yes, education is, is, is a great priority of all of us on the school committee. And we will do our best to try to work it out.
So we can ask? Kind of back to the, the question about where, where are we trying to get to, and I know that sounds silly, but operating cost plus what is the elements of what we want to consider our sustainable baseline, right? What, what goes into that beyond the operating budgets? And I think at this point, the new reduced other articles, right, maybe as a baseline, that's now down to two fifty-two, five hundred, if my math is right. What else goes into calculating what we think is like, what our minimum raise and appropriate budget should, should be able to, um, support? This just gives us a number to work toward, right? It's a question of what, what's the capital number? What's, what else goes into that, right? Just wondering what everybody thinks. Obviously, it can change. It's just somewhere to go, and how far are we trying to get to?
I think, I, for me, everything is so hypothetical right now, that unless we actually have some numbers on the table to look at, I think it's a little difficult. So personally, I would like to see all departments coming back with, as Ben suggested, just the, the, the absolute expenses that you have to do. So your, your electric, your gas, your colas, if you have them, um, that kind of thing. And that at least gives us a, a starting point, so we can see what that is. Because if that comes back and it's still way high, then we know we've really got big problems. So I think having that information first, as well as going back to them for this year's capital request. I know they're free cash, but, and just saying, is there anything that you submitted that you could absolutely do without? And can we, you know, is there anything that we can take off of that list? I think to me, that's where I'd like to see us start, and then kind of work from there.
Is there a percentage number that we can give the departments to, to say, reduce by ten percent or reduce by fifteen percent across the board and, and see where that gets us?
Yeah, bring back a budget no more than two and a half percent higher than last year. I mean, that should fit, right? I mean, if we were able to do it last year and they add two and a half, it should, should balance, even with the other expenditures, but that's... That, that's where I was questioning whether energy and salary even fits within that. I, I don't know, but I'm wondering. But, I mean, if I look at percentages, and I just haven't calculated the schools, not, not to leave them out or include them. I mean, I've got eleven to twenty-two percent across the other operating budgets. The only thing that's not at least eleven in terms of operating budgets was, um, the benefits, which was one and a quarter percent.
It may not be huge, but I'm just wondering if all the departments calculated electrical and oil the same. Did, did they all say that it's gonna be, you know, seven percent? Or did some say fourteen, some say six? If you can standardize on a number and say, this is the number, maybe that gives us a little bit as well. I don't know.
No, I was gonna ask that question, because I believe they did in electrical. I, I don't know about the school, but most of them, we, we gave them the recommend, the guidance to do fifty percent higher, because of the rate change was at least fifty percent higher for most people residentially. Is that the right number? Now that it's been a few months at the new rate, I think we can challenge that. I think we should ask that question, too. What is your change been versus last year over the, you know, since the rate change? What does that look like? Has it consistently been thirty percent higher than budget thirty percent higher? So I think we should challenge that, um, because fifty percent was a stab in the dark, and if it's lower, that could make a big difference. I mean, I think, you know, wastewater is probably our highest energy user, right? He happens to be here, so I'm not just picking on you, but it's a very high electrical cost. So if that one alone has twenty-five percent increase, not a fifty, I mean, that's a big, that's a big change, so. Some of those are big, big movers, probably.
Could I comment to Bill's question, it's just another point of view? Um, it's not only, you know, the treatment plant and, you know, wastewater and stuff, all the town buildings. Like, you know, this, this one, that one, all the town buildings, if the electricity has gone up by fifteen or twenty percent, or you said you told them go with fifty, which is more like it, but if it went up fifteen or twenty percent, and we just tell them, submit everything at two and a half percent, that means they have to cut something else to make up for, for the cost of electricity and fuel. And you want to be open three days a week here or there, in the town hall, or whatever? I mean, where are you gonna cut, you know? I mean, I, I don't know. I, I just think it'd be tough if you tell everybody, you go, everybody's gonna come back at two and a half percent, percent over last year, or everybody's gotta cut a set amount. I think the idea of what can you possibly live without, I mean, be serious, really, we, we gotta balance this budget, for me, works better, because the rec. commission cutting, sending it to an aftercent is a whole lot different than the police department, or the fire department, or, you know, the highway, that's, this got huge numbers. I keep saying the rec. commission, but there are the, you know, little boards and committees that get five hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars. They don't get much. And they're gonna amount, less than a drop in the bucket if they, if they do it. So I'm just concerned that asking them to cut a certain percentage, or only come back with two and a half percent above last year, it just, it's an incredible burden. I don't know how they're gonna do it. I don't know how they could possibly do it, other than just say, we're not gonna be open. What else can you do? Can't say we're not gonna plow the street, and you can't say we're not gonna plow the fires, and you can't say we're not gonna catch the criminals. You know, you, you gotta, something you just gotta do. So you'd be talking a lot with not a lot of solutions, but...
I feel like we're all, I mean, I, no offense to any of us, but that's a little bit of what the exercise is tonight, unfortunately. A little more perspective on the electric, it just popped in my head. I think I forgot this the other day. Two, we did fifty percent over their annual budget, but we would hopefully presume those rates are only higher for half the year. Right?
You, so you have a...
Hope that it goes back down to somewhere near normal before, I said you hope, I didn't say it would.
So you have rate increases that happen every six months, and then you have, uh, the supply is rebid every six months, too. So National Grid and Eversource are gonna do that at slightly different time periods. Um, so when those changes actually would be reflected in the, the expense to date could vary. So this side of town should have already seen those. I believe that happened earlier in the year, and National Grid may be trailing them, or it could be vice versa, but...
But it's twice a year, so in theory, you pay one rate at one half and one rate at the other half, so. If we presume the increase is only for half the year, then it's only twenty-five percent or whatever, right?
Right.
Just, just challenging that more than, more than that.
Actually, speaking to that, I just wonder if we had looked into, I know that you can choose your supplier. Um, I know that I personally, as a residential grid, we've got basically half the rate. So if you shop around in Massachusetts, I'm pretty sure that businesses can do the same thing. And we could possibly lower our rates if we, if we signed each individually, uh, individual building up for a different supplier. Might take a little bit of work, but it would definitely save someone, just a thought.
May be more worthwhile exploring now. We've, I think, maybe the three of us have actually gone through that a couple of times, where we have. And the net effect, even though it was like, ten percent for sure minimum was, was zero, or the other way. Um, not to say that it can't be successful, maybe especially now with how high the rates went, but that's definitely worth exploring.
I just caution with, uh, if it is wholesale pricing, um, your rate can fluctuate a, a lot, depending on, uh, the, you know, the demand. The whole thing with, with Texas, when they had that big issue, um, some people were receiving fifteen thousand dollar electric bills because the rate went through the roof for a week.
I think you just need to make sure you choose a fixed one.
Sounds like the caution, for sure. Yikes.
I can do research for you all on that.
Yeah, I, I think it's good to do. Every little bit helps, but obviously not, no. I, I will just throw it out there, if I'm doing any of this math tonight, right, if we say we think it's sustainable to take three hundred and twenty-five thousand out of, you know, our usual RNA historically, that's just about another two and a half percent. So that would being a five percent budget increase might, would be sustainable theoretically year over year. Because we get two and a half in RNA increase, and then decreasing the other articles by three twenty-five is another two and a half percent of our prior year budget, so in theory, could absorb a five percent increase across the board. It's a little, a little more, but still not there, but it's, it's better than where we were. It's better than two and a half right now.
Well, can I ask, with, with what you've looked at so far, and you might take this out, you might reduce that, I mean, where are we with how much more we would need to reduce to get to where you, where we need to be? Do you have any clue?
That goes back to the, what do we consider in the minimum RNA, like how much capital, how much, you know? Because without those, I don't know how to answer that, right? I mean, that's just to, just to say that that's not, um...
To be determined, is that right?
Yeah, it, it varies depending on what we decide there, right?
Can I suggest that, maybe given the week, to call all departments together and go through this and do the exercise that Ben's requested, and start putting together the different scenarios? Give Jennifer the opportunity to get the OPEB calculations on what that change would, would offer you. And then we'll get back to the seven of you with, uh, those different projections and see if that gets you closer to where you need to be.
Okay. Is there anything else in this that... I, I think the only other thing that I think we should give for direction to the department heads is, within your budget, look at where you have some capacity, and if you need things and you want to shift where that money is within your budget, that's fine. If your net budget's still level funded, or if you can decrease it.
Got it.
Right?
Good.
Because if there's things outside of, I mean, I'd rather ask for just a decrease, but if there's things outside of energy and salary that, you know, you have budget lines that you aren't spending as much, and there's a little bit there, and you know you really need to do this other thing instead, just shift, you know, you want to shift it between lines, level funded is level funded outside of those two, right, so. So, okay. Because at some point, there's gonna be a discussion of regardless of how much that is, more than likely, but I still need to do these other things, and how are we going to? Either they're gonna have to cut to do them, or, you know, we're gonna have to cut somewhere else to do them, so.
Right.
Have them start thinking about that now. If there's stuff you think you have to do in your budget as well, see if you have any room to do it level funded from other lines.
Just to piggyback on that, if not, um, kind of like they do with capital, when they have, you know, the, this is what I want, here's my explanation as to why I want it, um, something along those lines. If they have an item that they say, we absolutely cannot cut this, a really good argument as to why it cannot be cut. I should, explanation, not argument, but a really, you know, just a very thorough explanation as to why they feel very adamantly that that money must remain.
Okay. And you, you say cut, but you mean on an increase?
Yes, yes.
Why an increase must stay that's outside of?
Yeah, yeah.
Can, can we go back to, um, the assessors overlay? Because I, I think that, um, we could at least reduce that by a hundred thousand dollars, and I'd like to hear what the assessors' opinion would be of that. But, um, if, if we were to lose in appellate court, um, um, the cases that, that are pending, um, whether we put a hundred or two hundred or five hundred isn't gonna help us at all.
Just, just one of the upcoming cases will wipe out the entire overlay account right now, just one. And there's fours, there's four that are coming up, I think, in the next...
This year, yeah?
Couple, in the next three or four months, in May. There are four, four cases coming up in May. You know, depending on how those work out, any... You know, depending on how those work out, any one of those four, if we're, if we're found not favorable to the town, will wipe out the entire overlay account, regardless of, to your point, whether we're putting 100 or 200.
Right.
You know?
Doesn't make any difference.
No. But to Jake's point, it's about future capacity. So even if, you know, if we start reducing that amount of money that goes in there, even if we, let's say it doesn't wipe it out, and we go through all the cases, and it, you know, maybe zeros it out, or maybe, you know, gets it to 10% left, or, you know, it's favorable on our end, we still want to build up that, that account again. But if we dropped our, our raise and appropriate ability to put it in there and increase it again at 200 without cutting somewhere else, just, you know, have to understand that that could happen. I'm not saying that we're going to lose all of those cases, I mean, we could...
Oh, I don't think we will either.
We could go through and probably win all of the cases, and all this is a, it's an exercise that becomes a moot point. But it'd be foolish not to plan for the what-if.
And if we're that fortunate, then we can come to the voters with a million dollars overlay to use as free cash or something else, but it's still not sustainable RNA, right? It's still not, no matter what we do with that balance.
Correct.
It's a great one-time investment, a bridge maybe, or something, but...
I know you had mentioned that it was 9 million, I think you said if, worst, worst-case scenario around that...
Actually, I think it's 11, I think you were right.
Yeah, because I was going to say, does that also include the interest owed?
No.
No.
That estimate that we got for 11 million was not the 8% interest, so...
Does that include interest?
Compounded, yeah.
Thanks for the salt in that wound there.
And to be fair, some of those cases won't be heard for the next, till next year. I don't even think any of them have, only four of them have dates set. The rest are all in the future to be determined, but...
So the interest just keeps on piling?
Correct, at 8% from the day it was filed, yes.
From the day it was paid, right? Date it was due, because it was paid at the wrong rate.
Yeah.
It's not even the appeal date. And that's why I said we'll be closing things, because it won't only wipe out stabilization by the time, if, if the worst-case scenario, by the time you've applied interest and everything else, we'll be like, do we want fire, police, school? What do we want to have for services, because we can't have them all? And then what's our new budget now? 8 million, 10 million?
Yep.
And where's that other four or five come out, on top of having to pay? Anyway, that's worst-case scenario, or doomsday, it should not be there.
No.
We're not, I have no doubt that we are not that inaccurate in our assessing. We'll just start with that basis. Will, will they win something, maybe? But I don't think it'll be that dramatic.
I don't think so.
I'd just like to thank you and Scott for filling everybody in, everything you said is accurate. I'm reluctant to comment much, because I don't want to have any conflict of interest anywhere. But everything you said is accurate.
Thank you. So you asked, where are we? And I just wanted to double-check, because I thought I was doing something wrong. If I just add up the operating budgets, they are 100,000 less than our total raise appropriate. So the current operating budgets with no change leave $100,000 for anything else. So if we believe 250 of other articles and, I don't know, 500,000 of capital is needed, then we're 625, 15,000 short. Or, you know, whatever, however we build out the rest of what we need on top of operating costs, we have 100,000 in capacity. Assuming we don't touch overlay, I didn't, I didn't factor an overlay change in. But basically, there's only 100.
Could you say that again, just some understanding? Now, I walked in thinking with 3/4 of a million in overlay, so go ahead.
Which is, she's about to say, yeah. What I said was, if we take the premise that we have $13 million of raise and appropriate available after 200,000 in the overlay, and we subtract all the operating budgets as they're listed, we have about $107,000 left for everything else we normally would fund out of raise and appropriate.
Okay.
And if, if we do anything in OPEB, if we do the other articles in the, in that list of special articles, the stuff that we didn't cut is 250,000. So now we're negative 150 right there. And that's assuming we don't want OPEB, or highway, or anything to be on there ever again, out of raise and appropriate. And, you know, whatever stabilization and/or capital expenditures that we believe should be part of standard operating costs, or standard annual costs, I'm sorry. Whatever that number is, so, like, we haven't determined it. But if we think we should be saving $200,000 and spending 500 on capital every year, that's seven plus the 150, we're 850 behind. So in terms of how do we get there, that's just what I'm trying to say, is there's $100,000 for anything other than operating currently in the way this is budgeted for operating costs. All of the things that we have to do in addition to that, on an annualized basis that we believe is a bare minimum, needs to come out of operating after 100,000. Does that make sense? I don't feel like I'm saying that very logically.
No, I think I understand it, and these, these other things, stabilizations and planning for the future is costly. But it's more costly if you just wait till everything just falls apart, try to fix it. Okay, thank you.
What other things are not in this that... So I was just thinking of that whole, like, minimum and must-have, and like what you brought up. You know, for example, police department has a 15,000, or 17,000, or $27,000 lease now that they have to pay for five years, so that's a must-do. That's a change. Doesn't mean they can't absorb it in their budget somewhere else, but there are a lot of those. What else is not in this list? We talked about potential IT licensing. We haven't dealt with the IP mill yet.
I think it's important that there's funding for the wage study review.
I completely agree. So there's no money for wage adjustments outside of the steps?
What is the cost for the key cut, re-key cutting the police department?
Through capital, we have that in at 100,000.
Is that, is that something that absolutely has to be done?
Yes.
Yep. Yes. Out of the, what is that, 900,000 of capital roughly that we, that was put forth, is that right? Less, less the grant funded and any other items?
Right.
Yeah, I would say that 100 is important to stay. But none of those are, we have free cash, excuse me, we have free cash capacity to do a fair amount of capital. It's just a question of how much recurring capacity do we have if we don't make room for it in our regular raise and appropriate, too? And I think there was, but I do think we need to challenge that still. And I think capital probably was going to meet, and already has and wants to as well. Because I agree with what Scott was getting at, which is, we shouldn't plan to spend it all, right? We should plan to have some free cash still in the bank for secondary ed in the fall, or, you know, whatever may come up, because that's another cushion, right? And if we spend it down to the penny, just because we have a larger sum, or we choose to, it doesn't necessarily make good fiscal sense.
And then...
So I think that needs to get challenged a little, too, which is what, I don't know if it was you, Deb, or someone else said, of also, what's in your capital list, and how important is it?
Yeah.
So... Were you going to add something? Okay. Bill just brought up capital costs and the security system for the, or the, you know, upgrade of the badging system and stuff at the PD, is it a must-have or not? Well, I think many of us said it is. It brought up the point that we need to challenge spending that much of free cash, too, because we need to have some capacity left in case second ed or whatever, you know, anything else, like you said. Not just operating costs. Any change in new growth, or is that pretty confident that it is zero? Or it's not, it's not going to make a, move the needle?
The assessing office can't give us a firm number yet. They're still working on forms of lists from the utility companies.
Okay.
Which is typically where our new growth is derived from.
I'm sorry, what did you say, about new growth?
I'm sorry. All I was saying is, at this time, the assessing office couldn't give us a firm number on what that growth would look like, because they're still working on the forms of lists from the utility companies. With that being said, there's a, if you take like a four-year rolling average, it's around 100,000. Last year was only 77, so it helps. But it's too early at this point to say what it's going to be. I did increase if you, you don't have what you budgeted last year, but when we were doing the anticipated summary, we only used 250,000, I believe, in local estimated receipts. But the actual came in close to 340. So for this budget cycle, I use 340 as a starting position for there. So I've already changed that number from a budgeting perspective. And when I gave you the actuals, I gave you the current. So I only bring that up to say that in the budget, budgeting exercise that you all did last year, we were working with those estimated numbers, we were much more conservative. I'm truing it up to give you more cash upfront to budget with, because I know every penny counts. I would just be cautious to become a little more liberal with some of those estimations. Because if we push too high, and the actuals don't come in, and then you all go to set the budget, you won't be able to get it approved by DOR, we will not be able to set a tax rate, we'll be calling a special time meeting to reduce the budget then. So there is a, there's a science to this, but there's also a bit of an art. And some of those estimations are in the art category, so... As I get more information, I'll make sure you all know, so that we can become a little more precise. I just would hate for you to budget something that we don't have.
In terms of what's in here, though, obviously, new growth is potential upside. State charges and receipts is preliminary and could, could be unfavorable from what we have in here.
It's going to go through Ways and Means next.
And the education budget is 3,000 or so lower, because the Franklin Tech assessments went down.
The secondary education.
I'm sorry, the education overall. There's only one education line on this.
Right, they're all lumped in together on the...
On this sheet, so I just meant on here, sorry. But other than that, we believe everything else in here is accurate.
Correct.
And already is determined, outside of wage changes and the things we just mentioned. I feel like there's other things that are missing, that are looming out there, but maybe not. We talked about recycling, so I don't know what else there is. So hopefully, that is it, but, but... Okay. There'll be plenty more talk about it, so we get on that one for tonight.
Yep.
Okay.
I have just a question.
Is it about the budget?
Yes.
We're done with that one for tonight. Go ahead, Eric. I couldn't resist, no, go ahead, Eric, no, I'm just teasing, go ahead.
So my question as a school committee member, is the select board and the finance committee going to come back to all the departments and say, cut X amount of dollars to fund this budget?
No, the current message to all other, other than the school, all the departments, Brian's going to convey probably tonight, but should be tomorrow, is we want to see your budget with just your step salary changes, and just your energy costs, and anything else level funded. And if you believe there is something that you must increase, write a business case why, right? Write a paragraph and explain it, and justify it. And I'm not saying include it, but show what it is and tell us why. And then we want to look at it from that standpoint, from all the other departments. I mean, I would love it if the school could do the same. That's a big number, but, and that's a starting point, just to understand, does that even get us back to where we need to be? We don't know.
My intent is that's for everyone, not just, I feel like if we don't ask the school to take that same exercise, that's not fair to the other departments. So when I say everyone, the school is the part of everything, so it's everyone, everybody, yeah.
I only said it because...
Their next meeting will be...
You asked if I, what was the message to the rest of the departments, not the school. So I, I didn't mean it to say it shouldn't be the school, too, I agree. But I will, maybe, are we going to say more about that, or no? Because I will, if you know.
Well, no, I was just going to say, timing-wise, I don't know if your chair will be able to pull a meeting together earlier to do it, because your next meeting is until March 21st.
Our chair could pull a meeting in 48 hours, so if that's the case, we'll, I'll ask her to pull it quick.
I would encourage it. We were looking to finalize the budget in two to three weeks, so... Pretty close to your 21st date, or right after, so we don't have a lot of time to crunch through it.
To ask, just to build on Eric's question, when that letter goes out to everybody tomorrow, or whatever it is, will that recommend that they use X amount or percentage to plan increase for fuel and electricity? So they're all doing the same, or everybody's picking whatever they want?
I mean, you all helped me decide that, I mean, we, I don't decide it solely, but I think my thought was two things. Challenge the 50% is the right number, based on what you have been actually paying a difference year over year the last few months since the rate went up. And then also, project some kind of decrease in it for the half of the year, right? It's not going to maybe be as good as it was, but it's not going to stay at this rate for 12 months. I highly doubt that, it's going to go down for the summer rate. So, so use some more logic than just, here's 50% across the board.
Right.
To estimate what that is, and it will be uniquely different, because, for example, wastewater might be much higher, because it's a much more electricity user.
Sure.
So in oil, maybe it's more stable, maybe it's not, but, but that's, that's the energy.
Yeah, each department will look at it individually. I know Lisa Candido, the principal, was very articulate when she talked about, the increase was not nearly 50%, but the reason being, year over year, looking at the previous year, when they had all the windows open, they were heating the outside, basically. And so she looked at the recent, you know, year, and the actual usage, and the increase is not quite 50% because the actual use wouldn't call for that, under normal circumstances. So each department's going to have to look at it individually, based on their best assessment of their usage, and then apply an increase that makes sense.
Okay, I just, I'm not sure how Brian will put that into a letter, but so that everybody's operating from the same, the same starting point, how would you like us to do this? Rather than just say, oh, look at your electric bill.
He's going to meet with them, it's not just going to be a form letter that they have to work from.
It won't be a letter.
Collaborating with them on it.
It'll be a hands-on approach.
And that spare time he doesn't have.
Right.
But yes, we will help them to write, let's not just...
One more question in the back.
I'm going, yes?
Hi, about a week ago, Governor Dealey was interviewed by radio personality on NEPN, who's doing a show in Western Massachusetts. And his second question was special education costs. And while she danced around a little bit in her answer, she did say that there should be some fair share money for education. Do you know when that money is going to become available?
Yeah, we haven't been notified about anything that is, or may. I believe some newsletter said that there was an interest in doing that, that came out of the governor's office, or one of our representatives. But it was a, we'd like to, it wasn't a, we're expecting to, or this is...
But when you look at the fair share information online, it's targeted for education and infrastructure, so...
I would encourage the school committee, Eric, if I can ask you to bring that back to the school, and say, you know, what do they know about it? Because they'll likely know well before we do.
Yeah.
And see if there is something there. Makes a big difference if there is.
I'll do that, I'll talk to Jen.
And circuit breaker, too.
Yeah, we talked about the circuit breaker the other day, too. Which, again, the circuit breaker is balanced on percentage, Scott, help me, it's...
So there's...
Balanced on, on whatever funding is, and refunds, after the town spend is 45%?
No, so each year, they set a baseline of how much you're, you have to, threshold you have to spend on specialization. Once you hit that threshold and go beyond it, the, whatever you spent above and beyond the baseline threshold gets reimbursed at a, at a rate that's yet to be set. This past year, it was 75%. I don't know what the future years will be, it's year to year, set every year.
We had to spend 45%, or I forget the number.
42,000.
45,000?
49,000.
49,000, that, so that, it's not a percentage, it's a, it's a number that's set. So I don't know what the new baseline will be, nor do we know what the new percentage will be. So I don't know what the new baseline will be, nor do we know what the new percentage will be, that's yet to be determined.
And they don't set that number until November.
Far later.
After we. Right, okay.
So it, I look at circuit break, circuit breaker as money that, you know, we can't budget based on that. If you start embedding in what you think your circuit breaker money's going to be into a school budget, you're asking for problems, because you don't know what it's gonna be. And it's a program that, you know, won't go away, but it can look radically different year-to-year. To me, circuit breaker money is just going to get returned and recouped as general funds when it comes back and turned into free cash. You know, it's too cumbersome to try and say, and too problematic to try and say that you could incorporate that into an op. That's no different than us saying, we're gonna balance our budget with free cash this year. It just doesn't, you know, doesn't work, it's not sustainable going forward.
I just pulled up that Healy newsletter, and you probably did too.
I pulled up the whole.
H1 has it, it's the increase in the special ed portion of circuit breaker. And it's talking about a fourteen percent increase year-over-year. Is there a recommendation in the budget for the special ed circuit breaker? And it's designed to support full phase-in of full reimbursable out-of-district transportation costs. That's the basis.
Basis is just a recommendation.
It's what they're proposing.
It's a proposal, yeah.
We've got a lot of proposals right here tonight, but. I'm not to poke fun, but you know, I mean, what will happen? To Scott's point, we have no idea until it does.
We'll let you know when we get the cash back.
If you get a signed commitment, then let's factor that right into that revenue side, real fast. So, does that, I mean, that's what we know, hopefully the school.
And last week, the superintendent said, when that circuit breaker money is returned, it is supposed to be spent again on special education. So I don't know the truth, you know, it's hard to research these things, but that's what she told me last week.
If I'm not mistaken.
If I'm not mistaken, circuit breaker funds, the mechanism to recoup those, go back to general funds?
There is a formula of what is able to be retained within the circuit breaker fund that's revised year after year, depending on what is being received, by that complicated formula that you've all talked about. Any additional funds beyond that cap that's been recalculated every year is to be cashed out to the general fund.
To the general fund, yeah. So a portion of that is?
It's part of the school budget every year, a portion, right?
A portion.
And that's the carried amount.
Well, do you think we have accurate, you know, accurate information that everybody understands about how all those things work?
We can ask the superintendent to provide information on how circuit breaker is calculated and used.
But it's embedded within what they present to us for a budget, so the net amount that we show here is after all of those are already taken out, so. Unfortunately, it doesn't decrease what we see here right now, unless that changes. Anything else before we go forward from budget? Thank you. Discussion regarding the revised IP mill demo proposal. Which is still money and lots of it. Mariah, would you come join us, please?
Unfortunately, I don't bring wonderful news, that's gonna solve all of your problems.
I think it was gonna pay for our budget.
If we saw enough bricks, maybe.
No, we've been there.
Yeah, that doesn't work.
So I've spoken with finance committee and capital planning committee about this, but we received our demolition study back from Ty and Bond. Unfortunately, the costs were much higher than I had hoped. And so we did look at four concepts that you all had decided to send to them. And they came back with those, the prices for those four concepts, as well as kind of a breakdown of the cost per building, so we can kind of mix and match as needed. Concept number four, which was demolishing all structures, came in over four million dollars. And that was a surprise to me. And like I said, you can kind of mix and match with different numbers, but everything except for building two and building eight, which would include structurally holding up building two, after everything's taken from around it, would be two-point-nine million. So I did alter my capital request to be full demolition, except for building eight, at three-point-nine million. That's still a very large number, so. I posed it all to you. I did also, I guess, get back answers to some questions that capital and finance had posed, which I had forwarded over to you all. All of these, for context, all of these numbers include the assumption that the roofs of all of the buildings have asbestos in them. We've done an incredible amount of cleanup over there. The roofs are one of the things that we have not yet tested. They said it would cost about six thousand dollars to test all of the roofs and let us know what they're made of. My understanding is we would have to do that anyways before we did demolition. And so I would also recommend that we just do this now, and then we have more accurate numbers. One of my questions to them was if we assume that all the roofs are asbestos and any of the buildings collapse or burn as they stand today, would be, would we be required to dispose of all of the materials as hazardous, since they've been commingled? And Brian Day from Ty and Bond did come back and said that, generally speaking, yes, but that demolition contractors can separate some things, depending on what the destruction looks like and so on. But that if soils around there are also considered contaminated, now you have contaminated soils that you're having to then replace. And, yeah, so it, yes, is kind of the answer. We could be in a situation very similar to what Orange is looking at, which I know people have kind of been comparing the two situations. The other thing is that these costs do consider some salvaging potential. So salvaging rights generally go to the awarded demolition contractor, and that can give you competitive bids. But that takes a substantial amount of time to accumulate and clean any material that they're salvaging. And then I did push back a little bit on their twenty percent engineering costs that they included on this. I am not an engineer, but in my brain, if you're taking all of the buildings away from building two, and you have to structurally shore that up, that takes a lot more engineering than demolishing everything completely. They came back and said, you know, we use twenty percent as kind of our base, and that whether you're structurally shoring something up or demolishing it completely, it still takes engineering. If we move forward with any of these options, I would want, I would recommend that you all look very carefully at what you're agreeing to with engineering costs. And if that means agreeing to a lower amount and saying that we'll do change orders if we need more, maybe that is an option to look at. I would be careful about just awarding something and saying, yes, we'll pay twenty percent engineering costs on this almost four-million-dollar project, and letting an engineer just bill you indefinitely. Because twenty percent on four million is also much more than twenty percent on two million. And so, to me, the project that costs more, you're paying more engineering costs even though it's less work.
Just to your last point, I'm not sure why you need an engineer to demo a building if everything's coming down and there's nothing near it.
I mean, to be fair, that's also including things like, you know, site supervision, figuring out, you know, how much soil we, like, it does include some things. But twenty percent on four million, it doesn't seem comparable to me.
Just, just in case for clarity, if I'm not mistaken, those percentages are against the two-sixths, not against the four, right? Just to, just because.
It adds up to the total, yes.
Very quickly.
Correct.
It's a half a million dollars. In real dollars, which seems, yeah. Do you know off the top of your head how much it was before? Because this is just a cost escalation estimate from our old concepts, for the most part, but we had an old demo, except eight concept, right?
I have those numbers, I would, off the top of my head, I don't know.
I wanna say it was two-nine or something, but maybe it was less, I don't know, I don't remember. The six-thousand-dollar asbestos assessment, we're lucky and there's none that voids the six-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-dollar site-wide asbestos cleanup? Or a majority of?
I don't know how much of it, I don't believe it would be all of it. Because there are still, even though we've done a significant amount of cleanup, there are still some aspects of the site that do have hazardous materials. So I don't think it would be a hundred percent of that, but I do think it would be a substantial part. My, sorry, just to clarify on that, I did ask how much that would be total, like, if the roofs all came back clean. And they said they thought it might only be up to a hundred thousand dollars worth, which is a drop in the bucket, so.
Savings?
So I'm hoping that there would be more than that, but I don't know what that other, I also wanna look through, because they did include the updated hazardous materials list, and I wanna understand the ratio of the roofing material to what else is left. I haven't had a chance to really dig through that and compare. But again, if it's only a hundred thousand dollars, it's, I don't know, not as much as I had hoped.
I guess I just, maybe this research has been done, but we've done two, three, maybe four cleanups there already. I didn't have any expectation there was any left. I thought the last one was the last one.
It's everything we can get to, basically.
Roofing material, and there were.
If you scroll down, it has the updated list.
At the end of the last project, we asked them to issue us an updated hazardous building inventory list, so we would have an idea of what was left. And the roofing material was the one thing that we didn't touch, because obviously then you'd have an exposed roof.
So, because we did a brownfields, at least one brownfields before that. Before the latest one. Maybe two.
No. The only other brownfields work you've done in town was at Usher.
We just did the one two-hundred-thousand-dollar.
The two-hundred thousand, you did your own appropriation of about eighty thousand dollars on that? And then you've done your own cleanups, your own, the elevator decommissioning, you've boarded and secured it. You've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars at the site, in addition to the brownfields, but the only cleanup was that project.
I thought there was a brownfields there as well, you think it wasn't, okay. I thought there was another one prior, because we did the, the canister, the.
That was part of this project.
That was part of this, but there was one before that. I could've sworn, maybe not.
You studied and came up with a hazard, we had applied for brownfields funding in 2016, we didn't receive it. So we had used a hazardous building inventory to create the foundation of what our grant request was to the EPA. So we definitely talked about it as early as 2016, but we didn't successfully get funding until 2019.
So I'm looking through this right now, and it looks like the things that are left are mostly window frame caulking and some glazing compound on the windows, and.
But I'm reading that and in the comments, although it was positive, it was all abated in February 2020.
Right.
All of the caulking ones, at least I'm on page three now. They all say abated in February, so I haven't found anything that wasn't the roof yet.
Yeah, so if you scroll down to page seven of eleven.
Okay, you haven't gotten that far. In the detail, I just haven't looked at that closely.
Yep, so you'll see buildings twelve have some, it looks like it's like eight windows that have. Oh, this is four C, sorry, there's two different numbering systems, which is why this is confusing. There's some metal windows, window frame caulking. Yeah, the roof, it's mostly roofs, which is why, again, I'd also like to kind of go through this and pick out anything that we have specific questions on and go back to them and ask them about it. Yeah, and then also in building, building eight, it looks like, there's some windows and caulking that haven't been abated yet. But it's not, it's not much overall for all the work that we've done, but it is some.
My problem with the list is what you said, which is, most of what I'm seeing is asphalt roof. And so if you're gonna say six-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars of hazard and asbestos abatement is barely a hundred K of roof, then what is the other five-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars of hazardous and abating? We've spent, I understand we haven't spent, we spent a fair amount of money on it already. In terms of just the question about engineering costs, I know I'm oversimplifying it, but we need to make sure they're doing it safely. We need someone who's gonna watch the project on a regular basis, is like, you know, the site project manager. And we need someone to do the bid package. Doesn't sound like a lot of work.
Yeah, he also includes pre-construction meetings, submittal reviews, which frankly, how many submittals are there when you're doing demolition?
I'm just asking, am I missing something on an overly simplified?
That was exactly why I asked that question.
Okay, cuz.
I don't think you are. I mean, there are always.
I got the bid package. Demo everything but the building out back, don't spill anything in the river, get rid of everything that's hazardous and is not good and is not okay, and make it at least a reasonably level safe space when you're done. I just wrote it, let's go. I know I'm being a little.
The manual will probably be a couple hundred pages. The manual will probably be a couple hundred pages.
And the rest of it's boilerplate.
I agree.
So I'm not paying twenty thousand, twenty percent for your boilerplate language. I don't, I, yeah, I think we can, we can shop the engineering too.
Yeah.
Very true.
So. But at the end of the day, it's a three-to-four-million-dollar question, regardless of how we get it down. It's an overall, are we bringing it forward? I'm not saying we decide that tonight, but it's another big number to add to that list of things. And depending on how we're funding it, it's more operating cost. Maybe not in FY twenty-four, but in FY twenty-five.
You're talking about if you chose to borrow?
Absolutely.
That's absolutely a conversation for you all and the voters to have.
No, 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 I just meant, depending on how we fund it, it's either self-funded stabilization, or it's a borrowing authority, which ends up with a, maybe carrying cost, but definitely an operating cost in FY twenty-five, if not twenty-four. To add to this budget that we're already, right?
Yes.
That's all I was just, just saying.
I would advise against that. The ongoing obligation of an annual debt service to sink money and interest into a piece of property you've already sunk hundreds of thousands of dollars in time into, that you're not going to recoup, so.
You don't want us to pay interest on some green space, ground?
I would beg you not to do that, but it is a decision for you and the voters.
Understood.
So.
I'm sorry, was the property tried to be sold before?
It already had been, and they.
What's the status, is it up for auction, or is it, are we still trying to sell it, or?
So, I'll speak to that a little bit, we did not do the option, we did an RFP process. Because we wanna ensure that whoever comes in and does something with a property of that size, of that stature in the town, can put forth a project that makes sense for the town. The zoning would stop it, there was some people that were interested with housing, they said, no, our zoning won't allow it. And then it just, it hasn't gone anywhere. We could buy right, the treasurer has the right, just throw it on the auction block and we can do it. But you never know what's gonna happen, somebody comes in, they buy it for a dollar, you know, highest bidder. We've seen properties, railroad salvage sells to the highest bidder and it goes, and then it sits dormant and vacant, and ten years later, nobody's paying taxes on it. Anyways, it gets fallen in, the town takes it back over for a second time, or a third time, and you go through this process again. We're trying to not see that happen with this cyclical, back out to private, deteriorate more, come back to town ownership, back out to private, it's, so. Is it an option? Sure. I would advise against just putting it out on the open market for lowest bidder to auction it off and sell it.
Say that again?
I would advise against.
Oh, okay, against, that was the word I missed, I just like, did I hear that?
I think it's a bad decision for the town to see that property just go to the lowest bidder with no, no ability for the town to have any say in what happens to the property.
Do you mind if I ask you something to that? So I'll also just add that I regularly meet with interested parties. Every few months, someone reaches out to me. And I gladly go over there with Glenn or with Brian or whoever I go over there with and we walk around. And often people are really excited to see the buildings because they're really neat. And then I rarely hear from them again. So it's not like we're also not advertising this. Like we, you know, we talk about it. It's included on plans that ForCog has. Um, it's brought to the, I'm forgetting the name of it, but the developers conference, like the Western Mass Developers Conference. ForCog always has that as part of their literature. When we did our RFP, we advertised widely. We advertised in Boston and Springfield. And the feedback that we have gotten from other professionals is that demolition is the thing that will help us move forward.
I presume the general feeling is that we don't want to retain that property or at least not the commercial viable portion. We, we do this with the hope of something going in there and paying taxes. It's not, it's not going to catch up against that debt, but at least it's not continuing to contribute nothing. I, I think we all feel that way because all we've been trying to do is to move it forward to something commercial or something that's paying taxes. And the only party that didn't end up submitting was Affordable Housing. That was the only one that felt they had a model that could afford to demo that out of their money. And we have $600,000 from MassWorks?
Yeah.
From MassWorks.
Or Mass Development.
Mass Development, sorry, um, for, for demo that we can use towards the demo. But again, that's against 4 million. It doesn't seem so big. Did you have something you wanted?
Okay. Just wondering what, what was going to happen to the property once it was demoed?
I mean, ultimately the voters would have to authorize us to sell it. But I, we could take a straw poll. Don't think any of us are interested in keeping the, I'll say usable portion. A lot of it, uh, that's the landfill. So, and it's rocky and, and you know, inclined and everything, but the portion that.
The six acres.
The site, the six or seven acres, yeah.
To clarify, it would be not through another RFP process if we did that, or it could go to auction at that point.
Correct. Either, either one.
Yeah.
Actually, we already have the authority, don't we?
Because it was taken through tax total.
Yeah. So we already have the authority to sell it. I just was wrong.
So it helps any, when FinCon met the other night, we did support Mariah's recommendation to take down the entire property, except I'm going to say the wrong building number, the little guy. The little one in the back.
Eight.
Yeah.
I should know that.
So I, I agree with, with Chairman Smith that, um, the, the property continues to be a liability and, um, it, it has to come down. And, and looking at, um, we're, we're sitting here talking about, um, um, the budget and, and, um, not having, having the, the funds to, to be able to generate the funds to, to pay for all the things we want to do. I mean, this is obviously going to be a borrow to me, in, in my eyes, it's, it's a borrow. And, um, and the sooner we take it down, the, the sooner and quicker we can, um, turn that property into a revenue tax base that comes back to the town. And, um, I, I think in the long run, that's, that's exactly what we want and what the town would want. I, I have no, um, feeling for one to do anything else with that property except to turn it into a tax base, a commercial tax base. No recreation, no cemeteries, no, uh, no, uh, town properties or buildings or whatever, but, tax base is where it's at.
That's right. More revenue for the town.
Absolutely.
There you go.
I would disagree on the borrowing. That's the only thing. I agree with what you said, but I, I, especially if we plan to pay, the last payment of our library borrowing from stabilization, I think it makes more sense. Like I tend to agree with Brian in terms of just the interest. And that we're going to pay and have a debt service for something that isn't doing anything for us and contributing at all in any way. Doesn't feel like a good way to have a debt cost, uh, to be paying interest against a borrowing for. And I believe 4 million out of 12-ish, you know, is, is within our policy of one-third of our stabilization. And at that point, we'll be whole from our last time of borrowing from ourselves, if you will. And I'd feel a lot better about trying to come up with some plan to pay ourselves back the 4 million than to, to pay a bank interest every year for how many years? 10, 20? I mean, we looked at Arch Street borrowing at one and a half million and that was a expensive payback, even at 10 years. It costs a lot of money. We were spending, I don't know, half a million, million dollars in interest over that time. It's off the top of my head, but the numbers were big. That's why we decided not to.
I just out of curiosity plugged in a $4 million loan at seven, 7% for about 20 years. And you're talking a little over $30,000, uh, a month being paid.
In interest or just in total payment?
Total payment to pay that back.
Did it tell you how much interest it was?
Yeah, I can tell you the interest.
Actually, 37, 12 times 20?
$14,000 in interest every month. So, very expensive to, to borrow a $4 million, you know, debt service. And that's carrying it for 20 years. Uh, that's, you know, that's.
Well, I know about borrowing money.
Yeah, that's expensive. So we pay, basically pay twice over that time. So.
We weren't exactly favorable for rates either because of the large.
Not, so what Charlie's speaking about is, so we went through the borrowing process and the bond rating process.
On bond rating, yeah.
Yeah. And so there's, there's several things that they look at as a town. So we have a, a double A rating, which is, which is great. We're, we're actually in a good position. Um, we don't have a lot of debt service. We have the two wastewater projects. The challenge is going to be at some point, your debt to your ability to raise and appropriate ratios get too high. You become less advantageous. And if you get to a point, uh, where you're doing that, the number of, uh, potential, um, entities that would take on that debt or, or issue you those, um, notes would want to see more security in, in maybe your portfolio. And so our tax base shift to, uh, be as disproportionate as it is serves as a risk. So if you take increasing our, our debt capacity, if you take our tax, uh, share, um, calculations, they don't really lend itself to continuously borrowing time and time again. And you already have a borrowing authority for the Church Street Bridge that we may have to execute. So if we do that, you have three outstanding debt services. I don't know if we would be successful with a fourth. I'm not trying to.
Can we just add one this year?
You've got the existing POTW number one loan, which is in year 11.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got Arch Street Sewer.
The water tank? Don't we have the water? A water one too?
If it goes through town meeting, yeah, you'd have that one as well.
No, an existing one. Or that, no, that's just the prior wastewater.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
And Church Street Bridge. So it's something to keep in mind.
And if we're, if our budget is looking like this, that's a liability too.
You need to make sure.
Our budget is starting to be at the limit of our raising appropriate, just operate. So that doesn't look favorable for our.
Well, that's, that's where I was going.
And rates are going very, you know, unfavorable everywhere.
Right.
Not only unfavorable, I was saying, you know, if we're over here trying to figure out where we can knock off 10,000 here, 5,000 there, 10,000 there, and then we're saying, let's borrow and, and put another line item back in to the tune of, you know, 30 or 40,000 dollars a month, you know.
And that's a $400,000 a year cost.
Right. You know, so we're, we're trying to cut X amount, you know, and then to turn around and say, let's put ourselves on the hook for, you know, $400,000 a year for the next 20 years for a property that we're going to sell. And we won't recoup that money at all.
Not our lifetimes.
Nope. So.
I would advise against borrowing.
In the interest of just getting all options on the table, may not be popular, but at least want to mention it. And I, I'm not able to do it. I'm not a mathematician. Brian's tax, Mariah's tax, but it's a thought. If the financial analysis is done in a couple of ways, so that we could present to people at town meeting, whatever we do, we're going to have to approve something. Here's what it's going to cost you, homeowner at $220,000 average cost or average value of your home. Here's what it's going to cost you if we borrow this money. And figured into that, like each year, like on your tax bill, $300 maybe, whatever it is, I don't know. Wouldn't be that much, but it, that's one, one scenario. How much would, would you have to pay extra if we borrow all this money? Figured into that is our borrowing costs and everything else are going to go up because we've got five other projects going on. So you've got to figure out how much is really going to cost you if we do that, if we borrow it. How much is it going to cost you if we just take it out of stabilization? Because we earned something on our 10, 11 million dollars of stabilization. How much, how much would it cost you when you reduce it by 4,000, uh, 4 million? You know, how much would it cost you over time if we do it that way? And then how much would it be if you had just a one-time debt exclusion for $4 million? And it costs the homeowner $300 for one year, that's it. You don't keep the levy limit forever and ever. There's a way, a mechanism to do it. And then when you look at all the numbers, it may look, that people may see, geez, that would be a better way to go. I'm not saying we suggest we do it. I don't know. But without that full financial, um, analysis of all of them, I'd be tough to me to recommend to people, you ought to do this, you ought to not do that.
I'm glad you brought that up. So after the FinCon meeting where that was discussed, we've asked the treasurer's office to give us, uh, to talk to the financial advising team and get us an analysis of what borrowing would look like. Uh, we've asked the town accountant and the principal assessor to give us an analysis of what, there's a one-time capital expenditure option, um, if approved at town meeting. And it may even include a ballot vote. We were trying to understand the mechanics. If the voters approved it, um, it would not permanently increase your levy limit. But it would, it would give you the capacity you need for that one discrete project. So we can bring all of those options plus an analysis of taking the money out of, out of stabilization, the potential opportunity cost of losing that interest and, and give you that for your considerations.
Probably need to have a payback number to be able to project opportunity cost.
Right.
To, to get back to where we were.
Right.
And he's got to factor it in. I don't know what we would assume. We can pay back every year, but just something, right? We've got to get, or it's forever.
Yeah. For, for, for me, Jake, it's, it's just, if, if it was put to me as a homeowner, you're going to have to pay $300 this year more than you paid ever before and that $300 will go away. Or over 20 years, it's going to cost you $3,000, you know, for all this interest we got to pay. I might look at it differently. I, I don't know that that's how it would turn out, but I suggest we look at it, hope we do.
Yep, absolutely.
I think it makes sense. I, do you, I know because we shift and everything, it's not that simple, but on, under the, it's a separate, you'd, you'd have two taxes, right? You'd have your base regular levy tax and then we'd have a separate portion on your bill that was that one time.
Right.
And that can be one year or is it multi-year?
My understanding, it's a, it's a one year, but I will double check.
Okay.
Obviously this town hasn't done it before, so everybody's researching.
Our familiarity.
Yes.
The other piece I was going to say is just real simple. Is it really about a third of what we pay now if our budget's 12 and we need four more? Like, if, if we pay hypothetically $1,900 a year for taxes on a 12 million dollar budget, if we need 4 million on a debt exclusion, is it roughly the idea of taking a third more of your tax rate? I know the shifts and everything gets, makes it messy, but.
Changes that.
I'll be hesitant to say that on camera.
Okay.
I'm happy to get you that information.
Yeah, I bet you are.
There's computers.
Well said, sir.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Eric.
Dan had a great point, but what, what he's missing is when you say that the homeowners only pay X one dollars, what about the businesses? Because you did not include that. And the businesses pay more than the homeowners at a percentage.
I, I understand.
So please include that.
Absolutely.
In, in, because that's a lot more for the businesses.
But that brings up a good question. Can we shift that? Is a debt exclusion shiftable or is it flat? Or, you know, how, I don't know. So those are all questions because we don't know, we need to answer. Because if we couldn't shift it, then that wouldn't be true. That number is going to be very different for homeowners then.
I will find that out for you.
I think the cost should be done for a thousand. That way you can kind of.
Close to apples to apples as you can.
Yep.
Because not everyone's property is worth the average.
Understood. Yep. That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking the same.
Yep.
Other things we want for information to determine if and how we present this.
I think we just ask for everything in the kitchen sink.
All of it, yeah.
Okay. There's some, I, I didn't try to sum all these up. There's some references in one of those memos to building eight being a lot more expensive in that proposal. And I'm like.
Say that again?
In the memo from Ty and Bond, there's references to what were the escalators from before? And one of them was a lot more cost of taking down building eight because of protecting the waterway during the demo. And I just want to make sure that it didn't look like it was a lot in the list. I just want to make sure that when we're talking about 3.9 without building eight, is that really the right number?
I subtracted the amount that they had in their memo, which was, uh, $35,000.
For building eight? Yeah. That's why I didn't understand the memo to say that was a big cost driver from the prior, maybe I read the memo wrong, but.
I would have to go back and look.
That's fine.
Yeah. I think what maybe they were saying is that maybe it. Professions for water protection. Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to read that and relook at it.
Yeah. And I'd like to know what it was before. I mean, I, we can pull them up, but if you have the old proposals too from last time.
I had them all side by side, so I can take, I can make a spreadsheet with what the, we've had multiple years of different cost estimates, which was why it was so hard. When I was originally putting a number, I was like throwing out 1.8, even though past numbers were higher. I figured a 1.8 request gives us something to start with. So I can make a sheet that kind of compares all of them, including the new numbers, so we can kind of see.
I'd like that if it's not a huge amount of work, just to get a sense of how much are they saying it's escalating?
Okay.
Feels a lot bigger. Anything else on IP?
Well, I was just going to say if, um, you know, if we're going to pay ourselves back, say if we took our money, the money from ourselves. I was just thinking if you took the number of 273,000 of paying ourselves, that would, that would just continue. And if you don't see an increase or a decrease, it's just like nothing ever happened.
I was going to interject with the same thing, Charlie, and just say, you know, we already have a placeholder. If, if you needed one in order to calculate what the, uh,
Opportunity cost.
The opportunity costs are of putting it back in, I would use that as a placeholder. At least then we would get a, a, a feeling for what it would be.
Yeah, we could do that. I, I agree. I was thinking 250 just for a regular round number, but same idea. I know, you know, our 5% free cash target, assuming we continue to maintain something in that range is double that or so. So more than double, so it gives us some capacity beyond the payback. Assuming that's how we'd prefer to pay for it. I know we should budget it as an operating, whether we budget it or not, because it's our own payback. If it's a loan, it's part of operating and there's no choice. So gives us flexibility too, to choose to not pay it back any year if we had to. Anything else? Thank you, Mariah.
Thank you.
Is this multi-year trash removal going to change the budget?
I'm already carrying the higher amount in there just in case.
Okay, perfect. Um, did I leave any, did I miss anything that finance wanted to review or that we were going to review with finance tonight?
That's all I had on my list.
That's plenty.
I thought, that's more than enough of finance.
Understood. Would you like to adjourn the joint meeting?
Yes, we would.
Yes, sir.
We're going to have a meeting with capital again, so we can meet probably one more time before they set the budget.
Are you asking if capitals, we're going to meet with capital?
With capital, we're going to have another meeting coming up, so we can figure out what's going on here. You want to set the budget, you want to do the budget within, within a month, right?
Yep.
So should we meet prior to that?
I, I would assume.
I would think if there's any changes to capital, we need to meet.
I would say it's going to probably take you a couple weeks to get information back from department heads and such. I would say it's going to probably take you a couple of weeks to get information back from department heads and such.
For your next meeting on the 13th? That's the, the goal is to have what you need for them?
Yes, two weeks out, yeah.
So am I hearing that you are meeting with capital?
No, does it make sense a couple of weeks out?
Yeah.
I think he's talking about just an internal capital meeting.
Like just because the sake of time, if you guys want to schedule a capital meeting, you know, let the chair decide on that. Brian, just from a timing standpoint, do you think it's reasonable to have that data by the Wednesday before? For example, I think they usually meet on Wednesdays. Do you think it'd be reasonable to at least have the capital portion? It wouldn't need to be the whole budget, right? It could be just the capital request portion by the eighth or before the eighth. I don't know if they'd all need time before, but it gives them a chance to meet before our meeting.
So March 8th with Dado.
Next Wednesday.
Two weeks, Wednesday.
Week from Wednesday.
Yes.
And so what you do with that, or if it needs to be Tuesday, coordinate with Brian and figure out if that's reasonable?
Okay, I'll make that happen.
Thank you.
What was there? Motion to adjourn, I'll start over. I don't know if I made it or not.
No, not really.
No.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was only the joint meeting? We will resume the select board meeting or continue. Thank you all. We will see you again on the 13th. We'll keep going at the top here and come back after to whatever we skipped. Discussion regarding the multi-year trash collection agreement.
Hopefully the memorandum gave the high level. I'm happy to explain anything that you have questions on.
Questions or thoughts?
Not ignoring you, I'm just pulling it up.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. It's page 119 in the document.
Yeah.
Or 117, 118, 119, something like that.
Just so I'm clear.
Yep.
Where it says under fees for collection, year one, 122, 304.
Yep.
That's, it's actually year four if we're doing an extension, correct?
So that's the question.
Of whether or not we're doing an extension or just doing a new, a new agreement.
Casella would like you to do a new three-year agreement as opposed to a one-year extension.
With another one-year extension again, because we have two more available to us, correct?
You do. I did ask if they would try to get out of it if you went to exercise what's already in your existing contract. They didn't give me a full answer, but they did note for me that, like all businesses, they shouldered all those cost increases. And our rates were what we agreed to back in the 2020 time period, but they didn't change them. But they have reviewed what those costs have become for them with prevailing wage changing, with fuel changing, with truck parts changing and all of that. And, and they want to continue to provide the service that they're providing to the town, but they don't feel like they can do it for that rate that's in there. I think that would have put us at just over 107,000 for the year.
With the 5% escalator?
With the 5% escalator in there.
And so they're proposing a 122, 304?
No, I noted in there that there, I had some questions and I did meet with them this morning. We were able to finally reconvene. There had been a request for you to also consider a fuel surcharge, which is not a current article that you have in your contract. And the initial request that they had presented to me was a much lower floor rate. So if they exceeded that lower rate, you'd be paying a surcharge on all those additional costs. I had asked for that number to be explained, how they derive that, that floor. I think it's part of a negotiation, you all should understand what that's coming from. And they didn't quite get an answer. Instead, what I got was a revised number, and that's the one that's in your packet today. It's at $5 is the, is the rate. So I did ask for an explanation today and also a consideration. So the two things are this, there's a certain amount of fuel that is budgeted within their service contract. So of that 122 that they're asking for, there's a certain amount of their budget, and I believe it's just over 19%. I'll send it to you, she sent it this afternoon, that is attributed or budgeted for them to provide Irving with the fuel that it needs to operate the service. And so what they're saying is if they exceed that, and that really set $5 that they came up with, if they exceed that, that's a cost that's not in the existing contract. And so that's why they're asking for the consideration of a fuel surcharge. I did present the scenario with Jan that if instead it moved in the other direction and miraculously gas was, diesel, excuse me, is 350 a gallon, is there potentially a credit that's owed to the town of Irving?
Is there a rebate?
And so we did, we did ask them to go back and at least consider the equity of that. And we're not saying if it's $5 and it's 501 set, they get a surcharge. And if it's 499, we now get a one second credit, but there needs to be some acknowledgement there. And so, and so they were going to go back and talk to their team on that piece as well. They did note that the earlier numbers I had, had a lower fuel surcharge. So we undoubtedly would probably hit it, surpass it, have to pay that fee, but a lesser increase on the annual contract. The numbers in front of you are the higher increase on the contract and a higher floor on the fuel surcharge with the hopes that you're not going to hit it as often, or if we're really fortunate, not at all. So you wouldn't be paying the surcharge.
You said higher, higher?
Right.
Okay.
So before it was lower, lower.
Oh, I thought it was lower, higher.
Well, the surcharge is new, so it's, it's an addition regardless. But it was at a lower rate and the prospect of you surpassing that was higher.
Okay.
So that, that explains the change between the numbers I was originally presented with and why we're seeing the numbers that we're seeing now. They do feel very firm that these numbers are what they need to operate the service if you want to continue to operate the service that you have today.
I guess they're fortunate we don't have the volume that we had when they were absorbing the costs a year or two ago.
No, that topic did come up. It did remind us that they shouldered that.
Or should I, well, okay.
That we paid for the tonnage, we didn't pay for the extra trips and the staffing, which is, which is a fair point.
I was going to say, and it could have sustained, but then again, the volume proposed in the contract didn't meet that either, so.
Correct.
That's more on us than them.
And our, and our volume to that point, if, for anybody who cares and is watching, after the implementation of the sticker program, we got back down to around six tons per week, which is what we were contracted for. And it's been staying pretty consistent. Maybe holiday weeks are a little bit higher, but it's generally right in that six-ton goal that we had. So that worked.
We're back to.
We're back to where we're supposed to be.
Kind of our stable, slightly growing maybe, but nothing crazy.
Nothing crazy. Yep. So the, here's your options. Chapter 30B says that trash and solid waste is an exempt procurement. It's beneficial to go out to the market when you want to understand what the market will provide you and get those competitive quotes. And in the past, when you've had concerns, we've done that. That being said, we've worked out all of our service issues. I'm getting very few complaints about the current service. It's pretty stable at this point. So that may speak to you one way or the other about whether or not you want to negotiate a new three-year contract or if you want to consider going back out to the market and see what, what the market will provide you for competitive quotes.
You want feedback?
That is for FY '24.
FY '24, and I just to point out, it's about to be March.
I know what, I know what time it is.
It's about to be March.
In days, months, and years, and hours. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, based on the feedback that I've been seeing from neighboring towns and the, the companies that they're using, I'm not sure it's a very competitive market out there right now. I think we actually have lucked out with, with.
We have a very stable service.
There was some kinks in the beginning, but it's stabilized itself. And we have a, a pretty stable service that by and large, people are happy with.
Right.
In town. As opposed to, we might get somebody with a lower bid, but I would not want to log into any of those contracts that I see people dealing with right now. So I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to a, a new three-year contract with them. I understand fees go up. I'm not quite sold on the fuel charge. You know, I do business. I have to use fuel for my business as well. I adjust what I'm putting out as my bid price to try and accommodate that. But I also don't go back to the customer and say, it cost me more in gas. So I know I quoted you a price, but I want you to pay more now.
Right.
I just, you know, it's a cost of doing business. It would be great if we could all make, ensure that our profit margin is always the same, but that doesn't always happen. And so, you know, that's what the fuel adjustment's for. I don't want to lose my profit margin, so I want to ensure if my costs go up, your costs go up.
Right.
And I'm saying, no, I'm okay with the 122. That's a $15,000 increase from what the escalator would be if we were to just continue it to a year four. But I'm not in favor of a fuel surcharge. It's just my own two cents. I can get overrule two to one, it's happened before.
I feel the same way. I'm not totally sold on the fuel surcharge. Don't quite understand it enough. But I am in favor of staying where we are and negotiating a three-year contract.
Okay.
I will just say from my day job professional, whatever you want to call it, freight, and if you want to consider this hauling and freight, the fuel charge is a very common thing because they won't take the volatility. So you pay it. There's a freight surcharge on every shipment and it's calculated that day. And the quote's good for a day or two or three at best and it's billed due in 10 days. There's no, the freight market is, is not, yeah, it's not very negotiable, let's just say that. I am completely agree though, and there are other ways that, I think to what Brian said, that we can share that risk and reward. And, and whether that's a rebate program, if, if there is no overall net, you know, or if it's overall net lower or whatever those are, or not having a floor. So, you know, whatever those things are, I'm not as saying I'm for, I'm not for a fuel surcharge. But if something like that is a make or break, then there's some ways to balance that and make sure that not all of it is unfavorable to us.
Correct.
Because this is 100% unfavorable.
If it was 100% the way it is right now, where it's only a cost increase if it meets the $5 threshold.
Right.
But if they're amenable to saying if, if for some reason the pricing index drops drastically, we could put a threshold.
Yep.
You know, $5 triggers us paying, you know, $4 triggers, I'm just throwing out numbers. I don't know what that number would be, but a low-end threshold triggers a rebate on our end.
Right.
Something substantial enough.
Then I, I have no issues with moving forward. Wouldn't even argue with the 122.
And the last piece of that was for years two and three, they're proposing that it would be 5% increase. Or the CPI.
Right.
Is that language that you're open to? I'm told that that's common in their industry. We hadn't had that language in our contracts before.
I would make a motion that we authorize Scott Bastrach to negotiate a potential or a proposed three-year contract with Casella.
I was going to ask if somebody would join me to do this.
To bring back to us.
Thank you, sir.
I'd be happy. Because he has very strong feelings about it and I like him. If you would be willing, unless you wish to.
No, I don't.
Sounds like talking about who's the chair next year.
I'll second that motion.
Any concerns, anything else you need? I mean, come back with something that's a three-year.
I need guidance on, so.
I, I support the same. I think the level of service is important.
Yes.
If there's something in the operating budget that I wouldn't touch, this is another one. In terms of the level of service, so I think we want to keep level of service, but we want to be competitive as much as we can.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So I'll be in touch. Okay, let's start.
We'll meet Wednesday, we'll meet Thursday.
Maybe we'll get all the.
Five days a week, why not?
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Nothing like putting you on the spot.
Nah, it's fine.
Pete, why don't you come up? I was hoping to get those done before seven, but obviously we'll circle back. I'm going to move that we pass over police department policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we will come back to the EV rates and the financial software after, Pete.
Okay.
Review engineering scope of work amendments for Bridge Street and Maple Leaf. Which is, is that the paving? It is, right?
No, it's the next one.
Is the next one's the paving?
No, the next two are Pete's.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was thinking the paving was in the Bridge Street. You're right, I'm sorry.
I'll wing it if you'd like.
Revision.
What are we going to?
What?
I said I'll, I'll wing that one.
Let me, let me start over, it's late. I'll try and get out of here shortly. Review engineering scope of work amendment for sanitary system evaluation project. Sorry. So. This. The short version, why do they want more money? Or what is the more money for?
Probably, well, for the assistance of filling out the C MOM program, self-assessment, and then also the response letter for the C Moms and also the other questions that the, that DEP had. They kind of, DEP added this on, so Ty and Bond did the amendment for it. There was a, a list of questions from DEP that we'd gotten in the letter, so we need to get them that information. But the main part was the C MOM to fill that out.
This work wasn't part of the original engagement with Ty and Bond to do this, to do the SSCEs?
Well, it was explained, kind of added on. It was added on via DEP.
Because they asked questions?
Um.
I mean, this report, so if I'm reading the background correctly.
Yep.
Ty and Bond submitted the report from doing the sewer system evaluation survey.
Correct.
Which was part of their scope of service, right? When they did the survey. And DEP came back with questions on their report. And now they want.
$12,000.
To be paid to answer the questions for the report that they submitted, they were paid for.
And it's also to assist with the C MOM.
Well, just to be clear, so they did respond to the questions. They issued further questions that are conditions of the approval that they were issuing back in November. So these additional tasks go a little beyond, or actually in some cases more beyond, like the C MOMs was not even part of the initial scope that was understood. It's not actually even directly tied to the SSCEs in the sense that this is typical scope work that would have been part of that project that they would have presented to us back when you did the project. But the questions came as part of the additional, the requirements came as part of the conditional approval that they gave once the project was submitted. So even though it's an amendment to the engineering scope of work that you have on that project, it probably feels like disjointed work. And the question that you're all asking is exactly the question I anticipated that you would be asking tonight, which is why we questioned them on that. But this, this is above and beyond what was part of that initial project. And so if we do need to, to produce a response in the coming months, some of it is work that can be done in-house. Pete and Derby have spent time going through as much of the, the work that we can do ourselves in answering it, but there is some work that we do need engineering assistance on.
So who's updating the ONM, them or you, or your group?
Who is doing this? What was that again?
Assumptions limitations, so they're assuming that, they're noting that an updated water collection syst-, wastewater collection system operation and maintenance plan is not required on the response, but they did request that it's updated. And depending on which one you read, it sounds like it's due either April 1st or December 1st.
So for POTW number one, it is December 1st.
And for number three, it's April 1st?
Correct. If I remember that correctly from the email.
So I guess what I'm asking is that's not part of their scope of services, so we are doing that in-house?
So the best that we can, yes.
Did I miss what C MOM stood for somewhere along the way? Or can you tell me what it stands for?
Collection, management, collections, there's so many acronyms now. It's the collection management operators. I can't remember what the last one is. This is gonna help them.
So we need their help in filling out the self-assessment? This is like the short version of what it looks like the bulk of the work is?
Yes. Because that's also gonna reflect on the staffing and the collection system maintenance program.
I really don't want them filling that out, no, I'm only kidding. Questions, thoughts?
Now, Brian answered mine, I had the same question that you had. It seemed like we were paying for them to give a response to something that should have been included in the first
Right.
scope of work.
Do you have the money in your budget?
We were...
No, you have the money, not Brian, it's not coming out of administration.
No. Close, we came up with, close to all of it.
I think we can identify partial funding. But we may require a reserve fund transfer.
How much?
$12,800.
That's total, how much do you think you have covered? Is that what you meant?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
If my memory is correct, we identified about $4,000 that's in the budget that we could potentially re-appropriate. So it's about $8,000 that we'd need covered.
Under task two, I have a question, it talks about the self-assessment checklist was only partially filled out, and that part of this fee is to assist us in completing that?
Right, me and Darby Shagman sat down and we filled out everything that we, to best of our knowledge. There's things on there that we never, don't even know about. So that's why having them help us with it, because be honest with you, I wouldn't want to fill something out wrong, and then have it affect our staffing, have it affect, you know, how we're gonna have to develop a new program anyways to watch the collection system, do the maintenance of the collection system, which that's gonna dictate. So.
Okay.
Timeline of having it to them by March 31st, so they can do four weeks from notice to proceed, is that just task three? Or is that all tasks?
That is the C MOM, the task two, task one, and I think it's all of them.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just me, but the nuance between task one and task three. Develop responses to Mass DEP's questions and a request for information regarding its November 7th conditional approval letter, and then Time Bond will develop a draft letter documenting responses to all Mass DEP's requests for information from its, I mean, it's the exact same statement. One is, we're gonna develop it, charge you to develop it, and then we're gonna put it in a letter form, and charge you to put it in a letter form.
Along with task two. Don't forget, they're gonna take task one, task two, put them together in the same letter, and I don't get that.
I don't get it, I don't understand. Task one is developing that response.
What happens if we don't respond by March 31st?
It's a requirement of it, it'll be probably an NOL until we get it done.
Which just puts you on a further clock, right? Is there any cost associated with an NOL in the first 30 days?
Oh, yeah. That's, yeah.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
I have no idea what that is. I ask because this puts us in a position to be able to do nothing. We have one day. Or two days, we'd have two days to make a decision and do something different, ask any questions. Because if it doesn't get done in two days, it won't meet March 31, because they said it'll take four weeks. So basically, we're put in a position of almost not even being able to call another meeting to get answers to any questions. Or challenge what's on here. And I understand that, you know, Brian did some legwork as well as you to try to get those answers, but I'm just not a big fan of basically having, you know, that. Being put in that position.
Can I ask you a question? Have the three of you considered whether or not you're having a meeting before STM next week?
I think we carried a 6 to 630 if needed, right?
Yeah.
It's kind of a standard.
So I'm wondering if we identify the questions that you have and get them answered, it doesn't give you a full four weeks, but we could bring this back to you for next Monday?
Maybe I shouldn't have such negativity and distress, but I just feel like the we might lose task three, and then the three-week timeline will bring it back up to 12.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I leave it to you, do you guys want answers, or what do you want to do?
I would like some answers, I mean, task one and task three, just $12,800 for what they're doing. Task two is a tangible that makes a lot of sense, you know, working with you and Darby, and it's a hands-on task. But even in their own scope of services, the way they itemize task one is to develop the response to the questions. And task three is to develop the response letter to those same questions. That's almost like, I'm gonna charge you twice for doing the same work, I just want to, one's gonna be an official letter, so I'm gonna charge you for that too. And then neither, none of them are itemized, a lot of times it's, you know, different tasks are broken down as to what it's gonna cost, time on task, why, you know, how did they arrive at the $12,800? They did none of that, they just came up with a number, $12,800, and I just can't see the breakdown of the scope of service between task one and task three, of why they're even differentiated between each other. To me, you can just eliminate task one. That's part of task, the new task three, and it's, task two is sit down with you and Darby and complete that, use that information, and then develop your letter. Simple.
Or do task one and two and bait, put it together in a letter, would you?
Yeah.
You do some nice reports every month, some letters, it'll be fine.
Yeah.
Get some letterhead, and I tend to agree with you, I just.
I agree.
I mean, we work a lot with Time Bond, we very regularly do not question their bills and, you know, what their proposals. But some of, this one in particular just screams like it's just a quick here, sign it, give us, give us the money, we'll have it done for you. I just don't see it. At a minimum, if they could break down
Right.
what is that actually, what are the differences between task one and task three? And break down how they're arriving at the $12,800 between the three of them.
Okay.
Like what specific service are you providing? What is different between your responding, developing a response, and then developing a response?
Okay.
Okay. And with those answers, if there's any changes to it, or whatever those answers are, either they're updated document, but either way with a schedule that completes it by March 31st. Still needs to get done by March 31st.
Yep.
So, even if we've shortened that timeline.
Got it.
And I'm fine if they assume that means that they'll have a notice on the 7th. The timeline will require a notice on the 7th, that's fine.
Right.
But that timeline's gotta be March 31st.
Okay.
Okay.
Next.
If you love that, you'll love the next.
What's that?
So if you love that one, you'll love the next.
Review of engineering scope of work amendment for the asset management project. Number two, sir. This is that $140-something thousand project that they brought to us and, brought the grant to us and wanted us to sign so they could do work and get paid, right?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, I know I'm simplifying.
So, no, no.
With the $20,000, was that our $20,000, no, nevermind, nevermind.
No, so, basically, what, the way it was explained to us, because we questioned on it, was the initial scope of work was to do approximately with this 284 manhole structures, and then I guess in the time when the quote was originally given out, the costs have changed. So it would leave out approximately 25 to 30 manhole structures. And if we want to add those in for the inspections, it'd be the amendment here for $5,500. We can do those at a later date, though.
Right.
So this doesn't have to be done now.
Didn't the scope of work cover all of them on the original contract?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you clarify that a little bit?
Yes, sir.
So I, the way I understand it was the time that they had gotten the quotes to do all of them, the company to do them, costs changed, I guess, basically.
Subcontracted.
Subcontractor.
That's like saying that we have to pay more for trash this current year because diesel fuel got more expensive. And then, you're contracted to do a scope, do it. I mean, I'm not looking at their contract, but I mean, unless all their contracts are, we're gonna pass on any escalation in cost, and it's your problem, which maybe it's time for a new engineer. And I know Pete doesn't want to hear that, because it's wastewater, but we have other engineering firms that do other work for us that I don't have these feelings when I read the contract. And I know their emotional reactions, but still. It's also 10/11 at night, so it's probably not helping my my mood about them, but either way.
You said this is not time-sensitive?
No.
Table it. I have no desire to move forward with it tonight. Okay, do you want anything answered for next time we review it?
Yeah.
That's my only question, we can come back to it and decide later, I just, if you had anything tonight.
So I just want to be clear about their request for the additional $5,500 is based on the contractor's bid came in higher. So they could only get X number of the manholes done within the budget that was set previously.
Correct.
And so this is above and beyond the original, so they were gonna do 284, they only got to 260 of them, whatever, and ran out of money based on the contract. And so this funding allows them to finish.
So they typically treat those items like reimbursables, and so they'll put them into the budget that's approved with a not to exceed. And so, when they, to Pete's point, when they're putting together their proposal a year plus ago and collected quotes, they went with 284 structures, at that rate gives me this budget, held that for the project. When they've gone back out to finally put those contracts into into motion, those rates have changed. And so, the difference is that $5,500, that they were, from their perspective, looking at as a reimbursable pass-through to another vendor as opposed to something that they would do in-house.
They look at it as a pass-through without us having the oversight in the beginning to approve the actual cost.
Correct.
So, they get to determine the approval of the actual cost with the actual vendor, and then just say, sorry, you're not gonna get it all done, because it costs more.
I stand by my table it, because I'm starting to get a little irritated with it. You're starting to sound like me tonight. All right.
Table.
Okay. We'll come back to it, Pete, I promise.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Check the STM, I believe that's the answer to your question earlier today. Check the STM, I believe that's the answer to your question you emailed me earlier today.
Oh, okay.
From March 6th?
Yep.
Thank you. Review engineering scope of work for amendments for Bridge Street and Maple Leaf. We're on a roll with like-in-heas tonight. So this is adjusting primarily, it's a couple of things, and it is him, that's, is Pete's, that's partly, that's why I said it.
POTW, yeah.
Yeah, but that's okay, if we have questions, we'll call you back up. Scope one is adjusting the landing because of DOT wanting a flatter approach at Route 2. Right?
On Bridge Street, correct.
At Bridge Street Route 2.
Yep.
At Route 2 intersection. Scope two is paving POTW while they're there.
Correct.
Scope three is adding Maple Leaf.
Correct.
Four and five are future? Four was tabled to the future, right? Oh, that's just a delineated?
It's just the engineering, yeah. So the high level on this?
Of the fire pond.
We went through the capital request process, and capital planning committee started taking like projects and putting them together for the Farley neighborhood, so we went back out to ask Weston Sampson, is it more efficient if we just amend their scope of work, put together a broader bid package, and if you're successful with a bidder, bring them in to do all the like work, because it's all milling, paving, concrete work. It got too big very quickly, so Weston Sampson has given you all of these scenarios so you could do it in piecemeal if you wanted to. if you wanted to. It could be you do some now, you do some later.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. You don't have to do all of it.
This isn't the recommendation on the pieces to do now. This is the... All the pieces.
This is all of it.
Select which ones you want.
Correct.
It's à la carte.
He came in and said, "Capital Committee wants me to do what now?"
Yeah.
And he gave you the list.
He probably said that, too.
He did. So my recommendation to you is that I need you to do One because we need to finalize that bid package and get Bridge Street moving.
Two should happen while we're there.
It just makes sense.
Three should happen while we're there.
And three for...
Unless three goes with the culvert and the pond.
And that's a decision... So Three... So Maple Ave is going to be a very simple mill and repave. We don't need to move structures. There's no large stormwater issues other than the fire pond.
We're not adding sidewalks?
We're not adding sidewalks. We're not doing any of that. So this is a pretty straightforward project, but it wasn't engineered into the bid package. What we would propose on Bridge Street is that the work is going to come from Route Two down to the driveway into P O T W number three. It will stop at a culvert. And then, on Maple Ave, we will likely do from the fire pond all the way to the end of Maple Ave and probably go short from Route Two. And so in the future project, we would take care of the two culvert projects. Culvert goes under the street.
Right.
It's an active stream crossing, as you've just found on Wheelock Street. You've got one on Maple. It then traverses down the embankment, and then it crosses Bridge Street. So you might as well permit the fire pond and the two stream crossings at the exact same time, do all that Army Corps of Engineer work, and put together one bid package to do that work.
And so our mill overlay, Maple, will have two saw cuts or two joints.
It'll have a joint, yep.
Because it'll be a separate project, and Bridge will have one.
Right.
Because we'll go to the bridge or go to wherever we can.
Correct.
Because we're not doing them all right now.
Right. No. I think we still need to get our bearings under us as to what these new style of culverts for this type of a flow looks like. And so Wheelock Street really is sort of our testing.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's the pilot one.
Right. Exactly.
Hopefully on someone else's side, mostly.
Right.
Yeah.
So would... So you're recommending One and Two.
I think at least One and Two needs to happen. Three, I think, is more of a question if you want to try to put Maple Ave into there, and I think that's been our goal.
The only question I think I come back to is that really... Is that really the vision of that street and a complete streets approach? And I'm not saying we want to add multimodal because there's no... To nowhere right now.
Right.
It's its own dead end, right?
Right.
But I just asked the question. I mean, of course, we can have signage and things like that while we're there, but I just asked the question. Is it from that mindset? Does it cover everything? That's my only question.
We have not designed it from that mindset.
And so what's that gap, I guess?
Right.
And I guess I should ask the same about Bridge. I mean, is there a gap to what, when we think about what we've done in the neighborhoods recently and where we've tried to take that holistic approach in the whole neighborhood? I mean...
Right.
Is that we need to add some trees? You know, I don't know what it is, but just taking that idea, that philosophy of what we were doing, and I got the feeling that we wanted to continue that process everywhere we go.
Agreed.
In town, instead of just doing mill and overlays?
Right.
Not that that's the wrong thing.
No.
Maybe that is all it needs, but making sure we look at it from that lens and say, "Is that everything we would do if we looked at it from that approach?"
So I look at Maple Street a little bit... Maple Ave a little bit different in that complete... You know, when you look at different neighborhoods and you have multiple connecting streets with a main artery and having all the intermodal, the pedestrian, bike, and, you know, motor vehicle, that all makes sense. But when you have one dead end coming off of Route Two, I'm not sure... Even the residents, I'm not sure the residents would... They'd probably be wondering, "Why are you just installing sidewalks?"
No, no. Caution, I wasn't saying we should put them in there. I agree with you. I'm saying when we, at least, and maybe it's my imagination, but when I think about what we did with complete streets in the neighborhoods and stuff, it was looking at signage, you know, multimodal access. How does it fit? It was looking at, you know, road width, trees, landscape, you know, all of it, right? And all I'm saying is take that approach to say, "Does it need curb? Does it need trees? Does it need signage? Does it need... What is that?"
Fair enough.
And are we missing that in saying mill and overlay? Or is that included in there, and that's all we really need? That's fine, but I just step...
Okay.
Stepping back and saying, from that view of things, I agree, we don't need a sidewalk to walk to Route Two to hopefully not cross. I mean, I know people are, but please no.
Fair enough.
Let's find a safer way, then we'll put a sidewalk in.
Right.
But just that idea.
I don't want that street to feel like it's a different street.
Right.
Just if it doesn't have sidewalks, that's fine. But if it feels like it doesn't match the streets in the rest of the town because we wouldn't take the approach, that's all.
That makes perfect sense.
And that's the same question with Bridge?
Right.
That's probably a place, based on just use, it needs a sidewalk, but I don't...
Right.
I'm not ready for that.
Agreed.
I don't know how we do that safely, so...
We're reconstructing it from the ground up, so, literally. So chances is to ask it now, but let me give that feedback back to them.
Okay.
And explain that we need to make sure that that review is being done as part of this, even if the recommendation is to do none of that.
Right.
At least those boxes have been checked and that the residents can have that conversation with you.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know what that is, but I know there's a whole list of things that makes it fit that project parameter and say, "We did it." And I would just like to approach it the same way.
So would you like me to...
Whether you do the salt shed or not is really tied in with the mill and overlay of Maple Ave rather than the fire pond. If you're going to go, you go all the way.
Now, that was the argument that was being presented.
Lot of arguments.
A lot of arguments.
Every argument brings another argument.
Right. But I do think at some point, the scope became so unwieldy, even though I think from an efficiency standpoint, we would like to do all those things, I do think we are going to have to segment this into more than one project.
Yeah. I'm not... It makes sense to do the shed area.
Right.
I'm not concerned that there's going to be a saw cut and, you know, a cold joint if we have to segment it out.
But we can scope it now.
So you could... The question is, do you want to scope it? And so you've got all his engineering costs. I mean, if they're sending out a wetlands delineator, it probably makes sense to mobilize them to the site to do that once, as opposed to having that same wetlands delineator come back on more than one occasion to do the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I wouldn't... If we're not going to go forward with the project this year, I wouldn't ask them to spend time designing it right now. I'd probably tell them to keep the base data to the side and work on the project that really needs to go to bid soon.
That makes sense.
$900 just to do that, too? It seems silly not to.
Right.
Because that covers the culvert, though. Is that more work? And if they already there, then why do we bother with the pond? I know it's only 900, but if they got to come out again?
Let me double-check. You're talking about the...
Item Four?
So I'm saying, if we did Item Four, which is very low cost, does that include the culvert all the way down a bridge and across bridge? Because it's attached. I mean, it's that area, right? It's a whole area of one project?
For the wetland delineation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We've already flagged, as part of the Bridge Street project, we've already flagged a lot of it. What we had not flagged was beyond P O T W number three because it was beyond the 100-foot buffer. Once you put the paving of P O T W number three, you're back out into wetlands.
200.
Right.
Okay. Is this holding them up if we don't proceed tonight?
And no. They would have... You do not have to do it tonight. They would love some guidance when the weather was nicer to have gotten the wetlands delineator out here. It's this now. So the wetland delineator's not coming out.
Yeah, probably. Probably get...
It's kind of throwing it tight.
I think the only concern that we do have is when you finally have the scope, we want to make sure we get you a bid package, and then what's the timing of this procurement for the construction season if the goal was still this year? So how about I get you answers to those questions, and is that one that we follow up on again?
Talking about on the sixth. I mean, generally, any other questions? Are we pretty good with it? Anything?
Are you planning on still meeting for half an hour before the meeting, and then we'll continue our meeting after the special-time meeting?
Needed.
There's more than 30 minutes on the docket already.
There's only three... Two items.
Yeah. It's more than 30 minutes, my friend.
Yeah, it's been more than 30 already tonight.
Yeah.
Now, I hear you. If we need to, we will, of course. And it's an S T M, so not going to... Hopefully, it won't be super long.
No.
Other questions, or is that good? I mean, I'm willing to have the question, but any others?
Good.
Okay. Are we generally in favor of moving forward with probably most or all of them, depending on the response and what else that may entail?
Yeah.
I would be in favor of moving forward for all.
We have funding. This is engineering funding. We still have engineering funding.
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Review and amendment of the F Y 23 electric vehicle charging rates.
That was a separate email, correct?
That came separately today.
It was separate. Recommendation to adjust the fee based on the rates much higher than they have been, right?
Correct.
Yeah, because that's inside. Do we know? Do we have any idea what other charging services are changing their rates to lately, or no idea?
Not yet.
Just curious.
And I almost spent some time researching that, and I realized at the end of the day, we have to pay these bills, so...
Because either they use them or they don't, but the bill's the bill, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly.
Understood. Questions, comments, thoughts, motions?
We can always bring the rates back down if they... If, in an optimistic world, our rates go back down as well, at least to get through this period.
Yeah.
Do we not currently have the 10 cents per kilowatt-hour for administrative fee?
Do I put that in there?
No, no. What do we have currently?
It says, "I would recommend a minimum administrative..."
Oh, I keep that same middle paragraph. I just update all those numbers. The 10 cents has been static.
Okay. That's what I thought.
It's already in there. Yeah, so it's the same.
It's just... You're just asking for the rate from 35 to 65.
That's all I'm looking for you to change.
Because I'm reading...
I was just explaining how I got there.
I'm reading that saying, "I thought we already had a 10 cent."
You do. It's absolutely already in there.
Recommending something that we already have, so...
Right. Yeah, it's literally the last line.
Yeah, just the last one. That's... I was just getting confused. That's...
At 10:30 at night?
It's late.